Progress.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us here again at the Seattle City Council Select Budget Committee Meeting. This is a continuation of our October 27, 2022 Select Budget Committee Meeting. The time is 2:00 PM and the committee will reconvene back from recess. We are now in order. Madam Clerk, do you mind, please, calling the roll?
Councilmember Strauss. Councilmember Strauss.
You know, Madam Clerk, I apologize. I did say 2:02 PM in my recess announcement. So for the viewing public, we're going to go into recess for two more minutes and we're going to let folks come back into the committee meeting.
Recording stopped.
Thank you.
Try to rein in on our amendment comments as much as possible. With that, Madam Clerk, do you mind going ahead and reading or, excuse me, calling the roll for the good of the order?
President Juarez.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Sawant.
Present.
Chair Mosqueta.
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you so much. And when Councilmember Morales rejoins us, we'll make sure to note her presence for the record as well. Okay, just to orient us as we come out of the hour-long recess, we were still in the item number two on our agenda. And on agenda item HSD 38, we have heard from the prime sponsor who oriented us to the importance of the amendment from her purview as well as the analysis from central staff. So we're now at the discussion and debate portion. I would like to make sure that Councilmember Lewis is recognized first, and then we'll have Councilmember Juarez and Nelson in the queue. Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead.
Thank you. That hand was actually up from a previous item, but I am happy to say that I support this item and appreciate Councilmember Herbold bringing it forward.
Excellent. Thanks so much. Councilmember Juarez, thank you as well for outlining the questions that you did before our recess. If you don't mind stating those again for the record, and then we'll turn it over to central staff to help answer some of those.
Great. And I'm going to reiterate my notes, and I know I'll let, I know Councilmember Herbold offline sent some information as well. And I'll let her fill the group in on that. So thank you, Councilmember Herbold. I wanted to know what the budget history was since LEED's inception, beginning what year and amount to date. And then, of course, if LEED should operate at scale by 2023, what amount was that at scale?
Shall I start?
Please, go ahead, Anne. Anne, just want to make sure you know your video is not on in case you wanted it.
I would like it on. I am having an IT issue that I hope will be resolved promptly. This is Anne Gorman, Council Central Staff, coming to you without video temporarily. Hey, maybe that'll work. Hey, thank you, IT. So with respect to at scale, the intent of Resolution 31916, I'd like to read Section 2 of that resolution. And it states, "The city intends that the LEED program operate at scale by 2023, with scale understood to mean that the program will have appropriate funding to accept all priority qualifying arrest and social contact referrals citywide pursuant to the operational protocol currently approved by the LEED Policy Coordinating Group." So scale is not a number. Scale is qualitative. The program is operating at scale when everybody who is referred to the program can be supported by the program. But if I may, I'd also like to read Section 3 of that ordinance, excuse me, of that resolution. And Section 3 states, "The city intends that LEED be supported through a secure mix of public funding sources, including city funding and some combination of county, state, federal, and Medicaid funding." So while I do have information to share about the history of city funding of the program, I don't have the same information showing the funding that the PDA has received over the years from those sources. I will try to get it because I think that it's important to understanding the full funding picture for that program.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Anne. And the reason why I ask is I don't want to get into the merits. And I certainly don't think anyone here believes that we're going to arrest ourselves, arrest folks out of this problem. And I don't want to go into the success or not success today of LEED. I like what you said, Anne. I'm trying to put into the four corners of any document what has been the budget history so I can see from when I remember when we first, well, before me, actually, when we start funding LEED and how much it's grown. If I remember correctly, there were a few times where we doubled their budget. So I'm just, and again, that's not to be negative. I just want to see what the history is. So when we get to something that is more subjective and as you were stating, you know, what is appropriate funding? Because if I were to use that resolution for, you know, the 60 other budget amendments or budget asks, that number could be anything. And so I'm trying to nail down some parameters for me. And so I can come to some decision about whether or not I can support this. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Herbold, please go ahead.
Thank you. And I just want to, although the resolution does not name what at scale is, because it's about a recognition that scale may change, but that our commitment is to work towards fully funding LEED so that it can accept all eligible referrals. Currently, they're not able to grow the number of people that they're serving because they have to turn away people who are otherwise eligible for their services. I do want to point, as you mentioned, Madam President, I did send you some materials on the break. And those materials do have a number associated with an estimate from 2021 of what scale is.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any additional comments from central staff on that?
Sure. I reviewed the reports that Councilmember Herbold shared with Council President Juarez over the lunch break. It was prepared by my former central staff colleague, Jeff Sims, in September of 2021. And it cites a figure of almost 2,600 referrals in 2022 in terms of operation at scale. And just as a point of comparison, the current LEED contract with HSD is based on an assumption of 742 program participants. So it would be, according to LEED's estimate, as of sometime in 2021, a very significant increase to be operating at scale.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Herbold, I'll verify the proposal. Although I am speaking to the commitment to try and fund LEED at scale, the proposal does not do so. What the proposal is intended to do is to bring it to our intended 2022 baseline funding. Because there was a reduction in the mayor's proposed budget that was unintentional.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Nelson is next up in the queue.
Thank you very much. So just to contextualize my question, apparently there are 748 active clients in LEED. There's a discrepancy between that and what central staff was told in a recent conversation, which was 569. But only 28 of those people are of the active clients, regardless what number you're going with, are connected to mental health programs and 31 are connected to substance use disorder programs. And I think that there was, maybe it was the presentation or the document that you just cited from 2021, but there was a previous presentation to council that seemed to indicate that only 120 people have exited the program since its inception. I find that hard to believe. But anyway, so the city of Seattle is funding 48 FGEs for LEED and, let's see, almost 20 for co-LEED. And, you know, that's a lot of people. It's more than OED. And so I guess what I'm getting at is what are we going to get with this additional 7.8? How is that a portion between LEED and co-LEED? Because the latter has sort of a, is constrained what they can do in that program by the housing that is available. And we're going to be funding a new tiny home village as well. So how is that apportioned? And just a nod to Councilmember Lewis's comments before about accountability. Because I do, because I'm new here, I would like to know more about what are the outcomes that we are asking for with the LEED program? I know that 85% occupancy is the intended outcome for co-LEED. And I guess a better way of thinking about that, I don't know, is when we're talking about, sort of as Council President Juarez said, every year there seems to be an increase, I'd like to know what the fixed costs are to run the program. So to what expense, to what extent do its expenses increase with each new client? And is that amount different for LEED and co-LEED? Thanks.
So I will try to answer all of the questions that you ask. If I miss one, please, please jump in. First of all, it's my understanding that co-LEED can currently support up to 72 clients. I will confirm that. The funding increase that is proposed with this council budget action would support both LEED and co-LEED at its current necessary funding levels. And it would provide an increase to grow LEED participation to that scale level that we keep talking about, which may be as high as 2,600 people, and it may be even higher. In terms of a function for, you know, understanding the costs of the co-LEED and the LEED programs, I don't have a very good sense of that. I think that I would, central staff would be interested in developing one if it's possible to do that. And we'd be happy to work on that over the next couple of months, possibly in partnership with our colleagues in HSD and CBO.
Okay, I'm seeing nods. Councilmember Nelson, anything else? Okay, thanks. All right, Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. This discussion is just reminding me of that perhaps going forward, maybe for next budget season, we could come up with a standard checklist that central staff uses to collect due diligence for capital projects. We often are asking at the last minute for the sources and uses of funds so we can just see how everything relates together, how much we're contributing, how much others are contributing, the reason for cost increases. And then for these operating programs, a standard due diligence checklist, such as, you know, their last couple of years of operating statements, their proposed budget going forward. If it's a nonprofit, they're typically providing an audit. So just having this basic due diligence, which central staff might already have, but it would just be helpful to get a standard list. That way, people in the community expect that this is a standard list that we would ask for. It'd be a short list, but a basic one, much less than what any sort of lender would ask. We would be just getting this stuff as a matter of course would be very helpful. That's a project for the future, but it's just reminding me, as we ask these questions, it's helpful to have this basic due diligence in hand.
Thanks, Councilmember. I'm wondering if Ally or Esther, if you have any thoughts about those macro comments. I'll also note, you know, the frustration that I think we're all experiencing of having to do this budget deliberations within an eight-week period when other branches get multiple months. I was just talking to Kansas City and they start their budget process now and go through the end of the year on legislative-related items and then use January, February, March to get into the budget. So maybe on our list of things to do to expand out the number of months by charter that we have to review the budget, given our responsibilities as the legislative branch. Anne, I see your hand up, and Ally, I see you off mute as well. Yeah, if I might take that question first, Anne, and then if you want to jump in. I think in terms of the general, I would love to have the time and ability to scrutinize, first of all, the mayor's proposed budget with that due diligence and as well as all of your individual asks. I think frankly that it would be difficult for some of the organizations that we're asking. So I look forward to having conversations with you, Councilmember Peterson. Because I think there is something there that we could look into, but I do think that it would have to be balanced with what is achievable in this eight-week period. And I think it should first start with the requirement that all of the mayor's proposed spending is also, you all are provided that same information to scrutinize the mayor's proposed budget as well as your individual action. So anyways, I'm happy to work with you during the year because I would love a standardized checklist to support some of this. But we do our best to get as much information as we can to, as best as we can, verify the proposed investments. For the needs. Anne, anything else?
Oh, nothing to add to that conversation. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't eliding the council president's interest in, you know, the history of city funding for the Public Defenders Association. I do have that information. It's just what I pulled together over lunch with a big and much appreciated assist from colleagues at the city budget office. I would like to compile this, vet it internally, and send it to council members tomorrow. But one thing that I want to share is that it becomes difficult, starting in 2020, to talk about LEED program costs because it was during that year that the Public Defenders Association launched co-LEED. And co-LEED was launched in response to a critical need that was identified during the pandemic. There was not time to sit around and say, okay, here's how many people are going to serve. Here's what it's going to cost. And co-LEED has just kind of been catching up as a program over the last couple of years. So what I have is funding to the PDA. And since 2020, it is funding for both LEED and co-LEED, if that makes any sense. And as I said before, we are currently working with CBO and HSD to tease apart the two programs and develop a common understanding of what the budget need is. So in 2020, the PDA received 6.1 million from the city. That year, council added 3.5 million to 2.6 million in the proposed budget. In 2021, the PDA received 9.2 million, and that includes an increment of 3 million from council that was added in June of that year. In 2022, the total budget for the PDA was 3.9 million for a total of 10.4 million. Although, as the CBA describes, there is now an understanding that that funding was not sufficient for program needs. The proposed budget in 2023 includes 13.9 million. And if this CBA is accepted, the total will be 21.7 million. So this is an increase of 6.1 million to as much as 21.7 million from 2023. And I have past years, too. They're a little less interesting.
All right. So yes, please do send that around. And Councilmember Herbold, I'm going to go to you for the last month on this so we can keep going.
Thank you so much. And just broadly, I mentioned earlier the number of jurisdictions worldwide that use LEED. But I want to just make sure that people understand that not only is this a model that has been replicated in jurisdictions all over the world, 80 different communities all over the world, but that it is evidence-based. And Washington State has based its entire statewide diversion program, $45 million, on LEED. LEED reports outcomes every single month. And it is the only diversion program that exists that police have access to. And that's a really important component of this particular diversion model. And again, outcomes are reported monthly and the numbers are well-established. So I'm happy to try to facilitate sharing that information with council members. I just wanted to round up my comments with that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate you, Councilmember Herbold, for bringing this forward. This $7.8 million delta is really important for us to close. I understand, as you noted, that it was an oversight, maybe perhaps misunderstanding that's now been corrected for. So appreciate you working with the city budgets office, the mayor's office, and LEED to help identify a pathway to make sure that these critical services continue to receive funding because it's the people who benefit from those services. All right, we're very close. And then we're going to have two walk-on amendments. So let's go on to number 39.
HSD 39A1 is also sponsored by Councilmember Herbold and cosponsored by Councilmember Morales and Councilmember Lewis. This council budget action would provide $600,000 in general funds in 2023 to HSD to expand the scope of a current gun violence prevention program and impose a proviso requiring the funds to be spent only for that purpose. HSD currently provides funding, which is made ongoing in the 2023-2024 proposed budget to support the Regional Peacekeepers Collective of King County. That organization has developed a gun violence prevention program that includes a wide range of services, including incident response, hospital-based response, and follow-up care for victims of gun violence, and intensive engagement and wraparound services to victims of gun violence and their families. The Regional Peacekeepers' current program is targeted to young Black or African-American men and boys. 16 to 24 is the age range that they work with. This CBA would provide funding for the Regional Peacekeepers to develop a new program that incorporates the same elements of response, care, engagement, and follow-up, but is targeted to men aged 25 to 40.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold.
Thanks so much. Appreciate the description from Anne Gorman and the sponsorship of Councilmembers Morales and Lewis. As we are all too well aware, gun violence is a public health crisis. I appreciate the efforts of Mayor Harrell, interim Police Chief Diaz, both speaking to this, acting in this area, as well as the leadership of King County Executive, Constantine, and pulling together a regional gun violence prevention advisory group. We're going to be having a symposium on Friday, next Friday, to talk more about the county investments. But we are a contributor to those county investments. As I mentioned earlier, when the county is providing a service that the city wants to buy into rather than reinventing it, the city, we buy into those services. And in this case, the city has invested in $2 million of funds in the 2022 budget for support of the Regional Peacekeepers Initiative. In July, my Public Safety and Human Services Committee hosted two separate committee briefings on their approach, their being public health, their approach to community safety, and specifically focused on reducing gun violence with an intervention, prevention, and restoration program. Again, this is the approach that Seattle has invested in and contributes $2 million of funds. The focus of the existing program has been on young people between the ages of 16 and 24. At one of the two committee briefings, the Harborview Hospital linked Violence Prevention Program and the Community Partnership, I'm sorry, Community Passageways, presented data showing much higher incidences of gun violence in the 25 to 40 age group than in those under 24. So anecdotally, folks who do work on the ground in this area, including our police chief, are seeing reductions in gun violence for the folks committing gun violence under 24. But they're seeing a drastic increase in the 25 to 40. And the way this program works is it's wraparound services for victims and their family members based on the knowledge that we have that hurt people hurt. People who are victims of gun violence are more likely, and their family are more likely to be perpetrators of gun violence in the future. And so these wraparound services are really critical to reducing the likelihood of that occurring. So the hope is that this additional funding would extend the ability of the city to work with our partners at King County Public Health as well as the providers, like the Regional Peacekeepers Collective, to expand the program to serve this older cohort with the understanding that the mix of wraparound services, the staffing, to make sure you have a peer model, that the mix of those services and the staffing for an older cohort is going to need some adjustment from the existing model. But the existing model works, and we really need to show some urgency for adjusting it so it can work for this older cohort. I called for us to begin doing that work in July with any 2022 underspend. It's, as the bureaucracy often is, it's slow-moving. But I really, I'm hoping that we can get this up and running as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments on this? Councilmember Nelson?
So it's my, oops, sorry, camera on. It's my understanding that in 2021 to 2022, our base support is 17,289. Is that, that's correct? And then this year, in the And then this year, in the mayor's budget, there is, I'm sorry, I can read this better. But has there been a, I'd like to know more about...
We currently have a $2 million investment in the Regional Peacekeepers Initiative. It has, that those funds have gone over to King County, and King County has contracted them. So the baseline funding is 2 million.
Okay. I'll have to read this more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments on this? Okay, Councilmember, Councilmember Herbold, I am going to add my name as a cosponsor on this one as well. Let's move on. Oh, Ann, did you have something else?
No. I did not. I did not have something else. But Councilmember Nelson, if you'd like some more information about this program or its historical funding, please feel free to follow up with me.
Yeah, there might be a, there's another funding, there's another program called the Seattle Community Safety Initiative that there's another tranche of funding for, and that might be what you're thinking of.
No, I know that one. Thanks.
Yeah, and I just want to, I may have misspoken, and you're so kind to not correct or clarify. When I said the baseline funding, I was referring to the 2022 funding. I believe this proposed budget has 1.5 million. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, then that clarifies because the 2021 funding was 17,289.
No.
Okay, well, we can talk about the contract.
Do you have anything else to clarify on this?
I am not familiar with that $17 million figure. I will work with Councilmember Nelson offline to resolve her question.
Thank you. All right, I think we are good to move on.
Moving on to HSD 40A1, which is sponsored by Councilmember Strauss and cosponsored by Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember Lewis. This council budget action would provide 101,000 general fund in 2023 and 124,000 general fund in 2024 ongoing to preserve the current size of the Crisis Response Team, or CRT. That size is five members. In this morning's session, we discussed the role of the DESC Mobile Crisis Team as a contracted crisis response service provider to the city. And the CRT is a subunit of the Mobile Crisis Team, and its members deploy alongside SPD officers who are responding to calls that involve a behavioral health concern. This is so they can provide a therapeutic response or one that comes from a case management perspective rather than just law enforcement. And contract funding for all other Mobile Crisis Team members was increased earlier this year by DESC when King County increased wage rates for crisis responders. The city did not increase its wage rates at the same time as the county did, but because CRT members perform essentially the same work as other Mobile Crisis Team members, DESC and the CRT Union bargained wage parity. This led to a funding gap for DESC that will be 101,000 general fund in 2023. And this council budget action would fill that gap so that the CRT can continue as a five-person team rather than reducing to four.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Chair. And just in the interest of time, I will be brief and to say, the Regional Peacekeepers Collective, I am a huge supporter of. I've seen their work firsthand. If I wasn't limited to one additional cosponsor per day, I would have cosponsored that one, too. So here we go with the Crisis Response Team. This amendment is in conjunction with my earlier Behavioral Health Mobile Crisis Response CBA to fund the full continuum of Behavioral Health and Mobile Crisis and Intervention Services. Currently, as Ann mentioned, the Crisis Response Team's five designated mental health providers work alongside specially-trained SPD units deploying co-responder model to provide a holistic approach to law enforcement encounters with individuals experiencing behavioral health issues. The services the Crisis Response Team provides require the same certifications and credentials and impose the same risks as the Mobile Height Crisis and Behavioral Health Response Teams. Yet, as Ann mentioned, there is a funding discrepancy. This budget amendment would increase the Crisis Response Team's positions funding to provide wage parity across the team of crisis responders and avoid staffing being paid at vastly different amounts, which could result in staffing loss from these teams. This amendment does not expand the Crisis Response Team. It does ensure that the team is not reduced. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, Councilmember, I am not seeing any. Thanks for your brief comments. I'm also like, how can I get some of that sunshine over here in Los Angeles? Come on now.
We'll send it from Ballard, although it does a horrid thing for my video, I'll tell you.
I was looking out the window, like, where is it? All right, thank you so much. Councilmember Nelson, apologies. Please go ahead.
Yeah, just to correct myself, what I am reading says not to exceed 17 million. So clearly we're not...
On the previous one. Okay.
Thank you.
Great, more clarification coming on that. Okay, let's go on to the last one in our roll. Do I have that right? Yeah, number, yeah, 300. Hello, Karina.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Karina Bull with Council Central Staff. The next council budget action is HSD 300A1. It is sponsored by Councilmember Herbold and cosponsored by Councilmembers Morales and Mosqueta. This statement of legislative intent would request that the Human Services Department provide a report on contracting with human services providers. As previously discussed this morning, council passed legislation in 2019 requiring HSD to provide annual inflationary adjustments for contracts with human services providers and submit a report to council by March 31 of this year, evaluating this requirement and providing recommendations for any changes. In consideration of the trouble facing HSD in completing this report and the proposed changes to the required inflationary adjustments in the mayor's proposed budget, this statement of legislative intent would provide HSD with more time to submit the report and request additional information, including a demonstrated assessment of the findings from the University of Washington's comparable worth wage analysis of human services work funded by HSD and the Washington State Department of Commerce's wage study of permanent supportive housing providers. In developing the report, HSD should coordinate with the Office of Housing to include consideration of permanent supportive housing providers and conduct stakeholder engagement with human services providers, advocates, and government agencies, such as King County and the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. HSD should submit the report to the Public Safety and Human Services Committee by June 20 of 2023. And with that, I hand it over to the primary sponsor, Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Not a lot to add here with a nod to Councilmember Nelson, referencing the report required under 125865 earlier in the Budget Committee meeting this morning. This report was due earlier this year. And as noted earlier, because of HSD's workload, they did not do the report. I would have said that a report like this might be a good indicator of what to expect in a future year's budget as it relates to compliance with 125865. So I'm eager to extend the reporting date to June 20, 2023. So we will have a good indication of what HSD and the executive are thinking about the future year's contract changes to comply with the ordinance. So I'm excited to move this forward. And there might be some changes in a subsequent round to some of the language because we are continuing discussions with the stakeholders that we've been working with. But I think, first and foremost, reiterating the requirements of Councilmember Mosqueta's ordinance 125865, as well as layering on the reporting requirements on the two other bodies of work that are pending, one coming from HSD, the city's funded wage equity analysis, and the other coming from the State Department of Commerce on their permanent supportive housing wage study. So all be very, very useful information for us to have in June prior to getting a 2023 proposed budget adjustment. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And Councilmember, I don't see any hands, so I'm just going to jump in. I want to thank you for working with our office to include a specific reference to the permanent supportive housing workforce wages and calling for coordination with the Office of Housing. As we've talked about before, our county and state partners and our provider partners continue to try to collectively identify additional funding sources and strategies and help plan together to address these wages. And I think that this is a really critical piece that we want to continue to emphasize every chance we get. As we invest in more permanent supportive housing to get folks into those housing and keep them housed, we have to invest in the providers that help provide that stability. And given the wage disparities we've already talked about today, the cost of inflation not keeping pace with the cost of their wages for cost of living in this region, we've got to figure out strategies to look at all available funding. So thanks so much for the work you've done. And also to DESC and SDIU 1199 for their partnership and continuing to raise this at every level as we seek to find additional support. I said I'd be interested in following up with you on a number of things, but this is a huge priority. So thank you. All right, we have two walk-on amendments, if I understand correctly. And I'm looking at Alex. Okay, great, two walk-ons. And we're gonna, we are gonna get through the last two departments after that, folks. So let's keep going ahead. Go ahead. I see Amy on the line here. Amy, nope. Okay, who's walking us to our next walk-on amendment?
Madam Chair, this is Karina Bull. I can describe this walk-on amendment.
I appreciate it.
Okay, this walk-on amendment is sponsored by Councilmember Sawant. It would add 3.5 million general funds ongoing to Human Services Department to make abortions free in Seattle. This would happen through a contract with King County Public Health, and the funds would cover the administrative and direct costs of providing free abortions in Seattle for local residents and also for people coming to Seattle for care from other jurisdictions, including those coming from states that have restricted or banned abortion. And with that, I will turn it over to the sponsor.
Thank you. Please go ahead, Councilmember Sawant.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier in the Budget Committee meeting today, this amendment would fund making abortion free in Seattle, free for people living in Seattle. And as Karina mentioned, free for people coming to Seattle to seek sanctuary from states that have criminalized reproductive health care. To be clear, all health care should be free for everyone. We need a single-payer universal health care system so workers are not gouged by the insurance, pharmaceutical, and hospital industries and worried about high bills if they go to the doctor with all the damage that the for-profit health care system does to the health and family finances of regular working people. Making abortion publicly funded in Seattle would be one small part of that. It would also send a clear message at a time when the right wing is criminalizing abortion in states around the country after the Dobbs ruling, which was the single most severe attack on abortion rights in the last 50 years. If Seattle were to stand up to the attacks of the right wing and make abortion free, it would send, undoubtedly, send a clear message around the country. It would be a powerful addition to the sanctuary city legislation that was put forward by my office and was unanimously voted on this past summer, which is perhaps the most crucial type of legislation to be passed at a local level since the Dobbs ruling. That legislation made Seattle the first sanctuary city in the country for people, both patients and providers fleeing persecution if their home state has laws against abortion. That legislation inspired similar legislation being won by socialists in the city of Chicago, on the Chicago City Council, and also in Dane County, Wisconsin, which is significant because Wisconsin is a trigger ban state. Because abortion is relatively inexpensive compared to many other health care procedures, it can be fully funded publicly for a relatively modest cost. The city and county currently provide some funds for abortion access. And earlier this morning, I cosponsored an amendment to increase that funding. But none of those programs are universal, single-payer, free for all systems like this budget amendment would create. For abortion, that is. It's only for abortion access. Obviously, we need the larger single-payer system for all health care needs. The City Council Central Staff have estimated that it would only cost $3.5 million to establish this program. I really appreciate the work of Amy Gore and Karina Bull researching and making that estimate. Of course, anytime a new program is being established, the new initial costs are only an estimate. And in this case, it's no different. If, but really, it's the question not of something unique in this case. Anytime a new program is being started, there will be those, there will be that learning curve. So that's not the question. The question is, do council members support this politically? You know, having this kind of free abortion access for everyone or not? That's the question. And also, we also know that the costs are going to be far from prohibitive. If the council supports the budget amendment, it will require a new program to be established and administered. And so, as I said, it will have whatever issues that it will need to deal with for new programs. But that's true for any program. As I said, it's a question of whether Democratic Party council members agree this is a priority. And if it is, then it can be done, just like when the city made COVID testing free for everyone at the beginning of 2020. I also share that over 6,000 working people in our city have signed petitions in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Are there any additional comments or questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Let's move on to the next walk-on amendment for explanation.
Great. This one is me, this Amy Gore from Council Central Staff. The next council budget action is HSD Walk-on 2. The prime sponsor is Councilmember Sawant. And this action would add 6 million in general fund in 2023 to HSD for tiny home villages, for three new tiny home villages. And that funding would include 2.4 million in one-time funds for startup costs and 3.6 million in ongoing funds for operations of these villages. With that, I will turn it over to the council member.
Thank you. Please go ahead, Councilmember.
As Amy said, this budget amendment would add funding for an additional three tiny house villages to be established in Seattle. This is different from the Tiny House Village Amendment discussed earlier today, which restores funding to the existing tiny house villages. This amendment would be an expansion to create three additional villages to create many more tiny houses so that homeless community members currently living under bridges and parks and at the side of roads have somewhere to go. Establishing a new tiny house village costs, on average, $800,000 in one-time costs. And operating and providing services at a tiny house village costs, on average, $1.2 million per year. So this amendment funds establishing and operating three new villages in 2023 and then continuing the operating costs for those three villages in 2024. Lehigh have reported that they have the capacity and locations to create at least three additional villages in 2023 if there were funding. We have heard in the public hearing testimony from tiny house village resident, after tiny house village resident, about the powerful impact those villages have had on their lives. And this is not the first time the council has heard this. For years, the testimony from tiny house village residents has been completely unlike any other homeless service funded by the city. And when so many people come to the city council year after year and have the courage to tell deeply personal stories of homelessness, council members should take it extremely seriously. But ultimately, it's not even just about that testimony. It's about the material facts of how much homelessness is raging in our city and how urgent, you know, obviously, affordable housing is the primary funding that we need. And we need to increase the Amazon tax in order to make sure that we are doing as much as possible on that fund. But in an immediate sense, tiny house villages, tiny houses have played a unique role in offering shelter, community, and humanity and dignity to our homeless community members. That is why my office proposed the first city funding for tiny house villages during the city's budget through the People's Budget Campaign many years ago. This is why we have proposed adding new tiny... This is why we have proposed adding new tiny house villages during the budget to the People's Budget Campaign every year. This is why we sponsored and and uh passed the zoning legislation permitting tiny house villages. Uh and um and this is why I hope council members will support this budget amendment to create new villages this year.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm not seeing any additional hands at this point. I'm not seeing any. Okay. Thank you very much. That does wrap, I believe, our summary of the HSD-related items. At this point, Madam Clerk, let's move on to item number three.
Item three, Seattle Department of Transportation for briefing and discussion.
Wonderful. Here we go. Department of Transportation, a number of amendments in this category as well. So folks, we have all of these plus SPD to get through today. Um let's let's um let's let's start off, and I do hope that folks can stay at least till five and that there might be some flexibility, but let's get you out of here close to on time as possible. Please go ahead, Calvin. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Calvin Chow with Council Central Staff. Item S dot one A one is offered by Councilmember Lewis with support from Councilmember Strauss and Councilmember Nelson. This item would provide so five hundred thousand in the budget uh from the Seattle Transit Measure and hold those funds solely for support of a waterfront shuttle.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Please go ahead.
Uh thank you so much for queuing that up, Calvin. Um I'll be brief on this. Uh for the last couple of years, King County has appropriated half a million dollars to support um the shuttle service for the Seattle waterfront. Um I do think it's an important investment for the vitality of the waterfront and to de- decrease the reliance of um onsite parking near the Seattle waterfront to have an opportunity for people to access it um via shuttle um from parts of the city that are better served by transit uh or areas that have existing parking um not necessitating uh the construction or availability of new parking in the proximity of the waterfront. Uh and given the advanced um hour and that we're just getting to S dot, I'll leave it at that for now, but I'm happy to take questions offline on this uh and would say that funding from the city uh is necessary to unlock the King County money um for this purpose.
Thank you. I see a hand. Councilmember Strauss, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I will be brief, and I think it may have just the the technical term for this shuttle is the Free Waterfront Shuttle. And I think that the name says it all. It connects the Convention Center, Westlake, uh and tourists down uh down to the waterfront that is a bit of a transit desert. And for anyone that wants to ride, it is a free shuttle that goes to the waterfront. I think the name says it all, Free Waterfront Shuttle. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, council members, let's move on to the next item. S dot number
Sorry, S dot uh two A one is offered by Councilmember Strauss and with sponsorship from Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Nelson. It would add five hundred thousand one time to support work on the Ballard Ave streetscape improvements.
Excellent. Councilmember Strauss, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. The work on Ballard Avenue to use it as a pilot for citywide policymaking is going very well. It's an important we've used it as a pilot because it is not a through street and it is in a commercial district. We have some additional work to do before it's finalized, and that is improving the interim conditions, the and if you haven't been out yet to see the interim changes that we've made, they're really great. So they there's another round of improvements, need to add some lighting that is that is appropriate for the street. And then, most importantly, meet the historic district guidelines, because this isn't a historic district. So um funding for this uh next round includes improvements for the interim designs uh as well as making sure that the pergolas are meeting historic design standards. Uh and we're excited to have this roll out citywide as a policy. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. I'm not seeing any hands at this point. All right, number three, please, Calvin.
S dot three A one would add is offered by Councilmember Strauss, support by Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Lewis. It would add three hundred thousand to S dot for public, well, pedestrian safety improvements in the Brewery District of Ballard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strauss, please go ahead. I keep I keep wondering if the brewery district is like an official thing or if it's just like a colloquial thing.
You know, it's a little bit of both. Uh and this this work right here, while it's transportation related rather than economic development related, is helping to formalize this space. What we have is an industrial area that ha- has a lot of increased use. Folks, so there's and we're also rolling in our Leary Triangle work into the the Brewery District at large. So there are three corridors that we want to make improvements to. That is Fourteenth Avenue between Market Street and the Ship Canal, Ninth Avenue between Market Street and connecting to the Leary Triangle, and then Fifty-third Street, which connects there's a uh signalized crossing for pedestrians only at Fifteenth Avenue Northwest, connecting that through Gilman Park over to Sixth Avenue, which we are hoping to have a greenway. So this connects the Brewery District to Ballard. It connects it to Fremont. As well, if you've been out on Fourteenth Avenue, you have probably seen collisions because there is there there are there's a lot of work that we need to do to make it um to meet our Vision Zero goals, to make to reduce collisions between cars, to reduce collisions between people, bikes and all forms of transportation. I'll just put this one as the icing on the cake. There's still train tracks in the middle of the road that aren't used anymore. And so uh this modest request of three hundred thousand is just gonna get this work started, and we're gonna focus on safety improvements first to make it a safer and more vibrant area of our city.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Chair.
I'm not seeing any questions on this one. Uh I think we can go ahead and move on.
Uh the next item, I think, is uh offered by um excuse me, S dot five A one is offered by Councilmember Strauss, the support from Councilmember Ralston, Councilmember Peterson. And it would add two hundred and fifty thousand in twenty twenty-three and in twenty twenty-four to Clattree Street, plant trees in the right of way.
Please go ahead, um Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Chair. If last I guess it was last week, just last week's wildfire smoke teaches us anything, it's that climate change is an existential crisis that needs immediate, all hands on deck action, including increasing our urban canopy, tree canopy, yet preliminary results are showing that the canopy cover has declined. Uh this amendment will plant and establish about three hundred and fifty new climate change resilient trees in the right of way in environmental equity priority communities and other areas with low tree canopy cover in Seattle. This will help us move towards achieving the goal of a thirty percent urban forest canopy. Uh it's not complicated. Let's plant some trees along the tr- um along the street. And why this is so important is because uh on our streets and sidewalks is is an incredible amount of concrete, which increases the heat. And if we're not able to steward our public rights of way in a with tree canopy, um we're missing out. I know that we had, you know, re-tree Ballard in the nineties. It was very effective. If folks see pictures of old Ballard, there wasn't a tree in sight. It's this type of work that gets our our streets canopy lined, and that's why I'm putting forward this amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Um I would like to be added to this uh item. Uh I would just indicate as a broader theme that there is a significant amount of money available in the Inflation Reduction Act that can match city additions to trees. And so I do just want to make another um uh bid here that uh with this ad, as well as ads in parks and some of other 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 line items uh that we uh really work with the Office of Intergovernmental Relations to um match these investments and seek some of that federal support uh for a very aggressive strategy around um planting more trees in our public spaces and our public right of ways. So um I would like to be added to this and and hope that this investment can unlock uh more money in attracting federal support towards this goal.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis has added his name as a co-sponsor to this amendment. Any additional comments? All right, let's keep going. Hello, Greg Doss.
Hi, Madam Chair and Council. Uh Greg Doss, Central Staff, here to present the next one to you, which is a long one. Uh this item, S dot O two O A uh one would reduce proposed funding and F T E for the city's parking enforcement unit by twenty million GF in twenty twenty-three ongoing and a hundred and twenty-three F T E and SPD and add twenty million uh general fund in twenty twenty-three and a hundred and twenty-three F T E and S dot to eliminate the proposed transfer of the city's parking enforcement unit, and it would impose a statement of legislative intent.
That was a short summary for a long one. Uh thank you, Greg. Anything else to add?
Yes, uh in addition to the transactions, um you, uh Madam Chair, have included a statement of legislative intent and a menu of uh potential actions that I would like to go through at your direction. Um and I would ask Patty to uh flip down to that slide text if it's there.
Thank you. Yes, Greg. Please go ahead, and then I'll do some summary comments after you provide the full presentation.
I think he's probably flipping to it. Well, he's uh getting there. I'm just gonna go ahead and start.
Yeah, I'm gonna say them. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Sorry about that, Patty.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Patty. I apologize. Uh so I'm gonna go ahead and and start describing it. The statement of legislative intent would request that an interdepartmental team be formed to determine which existing or new city department would provide an optimal permanent home for the city's parking enforcement unit. Um that I D T would produce a report by May thirty-first. It would recommend a department that aligned with the city's codified policy goals and uh in ordinance one two six two three three and also in council budget action, S P D five hundred B zero zero two, which uh would expand the role of P E Os uh and and provide that they would have a greater role in civilian provided safety services. Uh the P E O would ask the I D T to look at a number of um unique needs of the P E Os and supervisors, some of which might include operational infrastructure necessarily necessary to house a hundred and twenty-three F T Es, adequate office space and fleet facilities, uh collaborative working relationship between department managers, P E Os, um uh the Parking Enforcement Officer Guild and Protex seventeen supervisors, access to employee well-being and development programs and programs that offer wellness resources and opportunities for professional growth. Um the report would also uh potentially recommend the addition of new resources, a reorganization of existing city department staff or space, acquisition of new facilities or any other change that may be necessary uh for the identified department to uh be fully equipped to support the parking enforcement unit and reach the goals of the S L I. The I D T would include the Chair of the Council's Public Safety and Human Services Committee. It would include the Council's Budget Chair, Council Central Staff, uh labor representatives from the Parking Enforcement Officers Guild, uh Protex seventeen, Labor Relations Staff, the Senior Deputy Mayor and uh her uh executive branch and appoint appointees. And again, it would be due on May thirty-first. And so that's that's my summary of this, the S L I. Madam Chair, if you want to speak to that, and then I can go into the table next.
You know, Greg, I think I'll go um I'll I'll make comments after you provide some additional remarks on the table, because I think it rounds out the the proposal here.
Okay, happy to do that. So when uh when I started, Cal and I started to put together this table of costs for transferring the P E O unit or for retaining the P E O unit, sorry, in S dot um it it was originally envisioned as a menu of uh potential costs, something that would be à la carte that the council would pick from. And as we have done more research into uh this transfer, I think what we have learned, what staff is learning, is that these are um not discretionary. And so what I what I would start at a at a super high level before I get into the table is to say that uh to retain um S dot or to retain the P E Os in S dot would require the funding of S dot overhead. And um also the funding of uh overhead on special events overtime that's currently not funded. And if you were to do that for the entire unit, you would be looking at, the council would be looking at adding eight point three million uh general fund for the labor costs associated with P E Os. That's the overhead component uh that would need to be added to S dot. And then also another three point one million uh for the overhead component for overtime. And so that would be a total of about eleven point four million. And that would be uh sort of the full meal deal for funding all of the P E Os and um the special events work that they would need to do and the overtime that S dot would uh or the overhead that S dot would need uh to go ahead and fund its indirect costs. So that that's the big number. Um what you're seeing in front of you here is uh some smaller numbers, the first being Pa- uh Patty, if you would go up one seventy-seven thousand dollars would provide for new uniforms. Um and that would include a a cap, shirt, pants, belt buckle, um really everything except the the jacket itself. And uh here's an example of a patch that uh a committee that a P E Os and S dot put together to look at new uniforms came up with. Um a second uh line on this table would show for four hundred and seven thousand, they could reinstate Sunday enforcement. That is something that they have uh not been able to fund due to a lack of overtime funding. And so that would provide for enforcement at parks, uh weekend markets, bike place market and major construction sites. And then uh the last two items, uh if the council chose not to fund the whole package that I men- mentioned, the eight point three million of overhead costs for the P E O unit and the three point one million of costs for special events, if they chose not to fund those things, um then what it would mean is that S dot would have to hold vacancies uh for their P E O unit. They would have to hold about forty-five vacancies out of um a hundred and five P E Os and twelve supervisors um in order to meet their overhead costs. Uh what you have here on these two rows are sort of a bare bones approach. If the council were to provide four point seven million in uh general fund, it would allow S dot to staff up to ninety P E Os and ten supervisors. And then it would allow for three point one million of the overhead. So it's a smaller approach uh but keeps the P E Os at S dot and pays for uh the overhead costs that S dot would need to uh continue to um function and not hold any further vacancies. So that's a lot. I'll stop and ask if if there are questions and and I know Council uh Chair Biscata, you 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 wanted to speak to uh all this information.
Okay, thank you so much, Greg. Thanks for walking through that. And Greg, I wanted to thank you for your um thoughtful approach with this. Thanks, Calvin, as well for the input that you've had. Uh I wanted to start by reminding folks that this is the last of my omnibus amendments, and we have three that we are bringing forward for the purposes of daylighting and discussion today. Uh the uh revenue realignment was the first one. The second one was the I um Unified Care Team discussion that we had about solutions beyond removals. And here today, we have a suggestion for your consideration. Obviously, this is still a work in progress. I want to state that this is um really an effort to try to outline some various strategies, a multi-layered approach uh that our office has been considering and an opportunity to daylight some of those discussions that we've had. Uh at the beginning of this, I want to note that through conversations that I've had with members from the Parking Enforcement Officers and the Parking Enforcement Officer Supervisors, it is very clear that there are some significant and serious concerns within the existing structure at S dot that should be taken care of immediately. In addition to this amendment, as you've heard from Greg, in addition to the strategies that I'm outlining for suggested interdepartmental task force to look at a permanent home, uh wherever that may be for the Parking Enforcement Officers Unit, I am also suggesting that this council could propose immediate solutions to help support some of the administrative issues that have been brought to our attention that need immediate action. Many of these Parking Enforcement Officers have stated that they have not had a day off in three weeks because of the understaffing that they currently have. Some of the supervisors have noted that they've been asked to Some of the supervisors have noted that they've been asked to work out of class and management roles that don't fit their skills and the reason that they're currently within S dot. We've heard from folks that they don't have the support that they need for even the paper to write the tickets on, let alone the envelopes to stick them in. We need to help make sure that these workers who are doing the best they can for the city, who are showing up day in and day out, often. Weeks on end without a day off have the support they need. That is our responsibility as a city as a whole, between the legislative and the executive branch, to ensure that there's the resources to support these workers. And to make sure that if there's immediate action that does not require legislation, that we're jointly working on that. And that's why, in addition to the strategy that I'm outlining for twenty-twenty-three, I'm also suggesting some immediate investment opportunities in the budget. To help ensure that these workers are treated with respect and dignity, but also that we don't quickly act to move folks when we know that the mayor has said himself. In the, in the outline of the speech, that the Parking Enforcement Officer moved to Seattle Police Department may not be their permanent home. I am suggesting that instead of moving them at this moment, we have a thoughtful, intentional conversation with the executive legislative branch, with the department, with the workers themselves. And outline the series of things that they need in order to be successful in any department that they go to. And then, once we have looked at the list of things that are needed, then we do an assessment collectively to identify which department they must be, may be best suited for. We had a lot of conversations over the last years about, um, the Community Safety and Communication Center and is, uh, Community Safety and. Uh, Communication Center Department initially, the CSCC, uh, it was argued from the previous mayor and administration at S dot that. Uh, the Department of Transportation was more appropriate. There is now this ongoing conversation about a potential fourth, um, public safety department. Let's have an intentional conversation about where folks should move before move takes place. And recognize that some of these issues that folks are facing, the very serious and, and important issues that are standing in the way of people being able to do their jobs are addressed. In every aspect that we can in this budget, but not quickly move to move folks to a different department that they might end up moving within the next twelve to twenty-four months. I really appreciate colleagues that there's joint interest in making sure that the Parking Enforcement Officers have the support they need to do their work. And I hope through this amendment that folks see that my intention is to make sure that we aren't, aren't intentional. Take the temperature down, depoliticize the discussion about where they should go and really just concentrate on what the workers themselves. Need structurally versus assuming that it can be within one department or another here. That's why I'm suggesting that they would stay at S dot for the course of this analysis. We've bumped up the time to, uh, a report back to the council in May so that the council could receive recommendations prior to the supplemental budget. If the desire out of the in, interdepartmental task force here is to move the Parking Enforcement Officer Unit, including officers and supervisors. We would then have the information prior to our sup- uh, our supplemental budget discussions. That would allow for us to put into place any sort of structural changes needed, as outlined in Greg's memo here. To answer all of these questions and have, uh, the resources needed to ensure a successful transition. It would also allow for us to then build a twenty-twenty-four budget and out years with a permanent home for these individuals. I really hope that folks, um, get the chance to sit with this. Obviously, there's not a vote today and, um, there's no, there's no proxy votes that we're having, but I wanted to daylight this. Um, as part of a strategy that we could have with the departments. With labor representatives, with the mayor's office and with us to ensure that there is a permanent home that aligns with the mission and vision in the ordinance that we passed last year. That we have a parking enforcement division that can really help serve the public because that is what they say they want to do and are doing the best they can under the current circumstances. But also make sure that we have, um, a strategy and a, um, pathway towards a permanent home before any move happens. And Patty, you're welcome to keep that, um, that slide, that one pager up, because I think it's a helpful summary and I'm sure we're gonna have more questions on it. And I might ask you to scroll to one of those sections on the, um, table quickly as well. Uh, just a few more things and I'll turn it back to Greg for additional context or clarification if needed. Uh, in addition to the intentional conversation with the interdepartmental task force, um, I want to make sure that I highlight some of the action items that is right there in that table on the screen. The example here of a patch or a uniform change that could be made, this, this is something that the Parking Enforcement Officers have wanted themselves. In fact, they created a commission to design their own patches. These, this is one example of a series of, of recommendations that they want to have to have unique patches so that, um, their unit can be recognized. This has not been deployed or funded yet, and I think that this is an important opportunity for us to invest in the work. That the Parking Enforcement Officers put into designing these patches. And so I'm suggesting in this budget that we move forward and include these patches and uniform changes in this year's budget. Additionally, we've heard, as I noted, a high number of officers having to work overtime. So as we strive to reach, um, hiring goals as outlined. Uh, in the proposal here, uh, we want to support them with additional overtime to make sure that they're being compensated for this work. I also think that there is an opportunity for us to can, uh, intentionally work to make sure that between, um, the labor representatives and the executive and the department. That any of these immediate issues regarding, uh, where people are being asked to work and the type of work that they're doing that might not conform with the skills and. Structure of a, the Parking Enforcement Officers or Supervisors be immediately addressed so that workers really feel. Uh, that they are being, uh, used in the skills and expertise that they have when they came over. Um, and voluntarily suggested to move from their place, um, two years ago. To make sure that they have all of the support that they need to address the concerns that we're hearing around structure within the department. I know that some of this is outside of what the legislative branch can do. So my hope here is that folks see. Uh, some immediate action in terms of investments in the budget, a pathwa- wave towards, um, possible movement in mid-year next year. Recognizing that no one is committed to a specific department and that that really needs to come out of the IDT task force. So open in terms of where they should go, but let's have an intentional conversation before moving folks. I know that much of this work is yet to be fleshed out. Um, a lot of conversations still to be had with members of labor and the, uh, executive office as well. Um, this is my proposal that I am bringing forward in the spirit of transparency. And again, I hope that it is showing good faith in trying to ensure that there is a long-term, stable place for our much-valued Parking Enforcement Officers and Supervisors. To have the support and structure they need. And in the meantime, I'm suggesting that we provide some immediate. Uh, relief in terms of some of these investments that I think will help show action, but, um, but also commit, uh, to a process. That gets us to a long-term, stable home that respects the work and the structure needed in no matter which department, uh, we decide on after the IDT. Greg, I'm gonna ask if you had anything clarifying, and then I'm gonna turn to Councilmember Herbal.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things that, uh, um, I should have said but didn't, um, a, a couple on the table, um, uh. The ad one, one FTE personnel spec to human resources dedicated to recruiting PEOs. Um, and the backgrounding services, uh, those amounts, um. The FTE would be about a hundred and twenty-six-thousand and the backgrounding services would be about thirty thousand. Those would not be general fund amounts. Those would be, um. S dot, uh, internal costs, uh, overhead funded. And, uh, it is the case that they would be, um. Uh, potentially added by S dot so that, uh, they could recruit up to the ninety PEOs and the ten, uh, PEO supers- two supervisors that I have. Laid out here in sort of this, uh, I'm calling it a bare bones. We, the city does not have that many PEOs and P, PEOs right now. So they would need to recruit up to that level to, to get to that, that point. And the other thing I wanted to point out, uh, that I didn't point out in my opening comments is. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, for pointing out that there is a, um, non-labor component that, uh, would need to be addressed. S dot has, uh, has talked with staff about that. Uh, it could be as high as two-point-five-million and staff is researching to see. How much of that funding would be needed, uh, in the short term? Well, this IDT did its work. Um, things for, or funding for things like, um, uh, impound costs. And, uh, vehicles for the supervi- vehicles for the supervisors. Um, we are looking at that to see how much would actually be needed next year as opposed to longer-term investments. So that's still an ongoing, um, push there. And that's all I had.
Thanks so much, Greg. Uh, Councilmember Herbal, please go ahead.
Thanks so much. Um, I appreciate you, Madam Chair, um, working on this, uh, this issue. Um, also appreciate that as. Part of the, uh, longer, longer-term conversation that you are identifying some immediate. Um, investments that can address some of the, um, concerning issues. Um, that PEOs are, um, managing right now at, at S dot. One of the issues that we had heard about, um, and I do see it's flagged as an issue for the IDT to, to grapple with. But it is the issue, um, of the, um, access to, um, to CGIS. Um, and I know that, um, the chief, uh, had, had explained. A number of months ago that, um, they had, um, developed a, a sort of a workaround. To, um, the lack of access to, to CGIS and that's that, that receiving a hot sheet. Um, and I'm wondering, uh, Greg, did you find any out anything more about whether or not that's working? And if not, if there's something that can be done to make it work better? I believe the lack of access to CGIS is part of. SPAG's, uh, ULP unfair labor practice and that it, it, it is an example of another thing that I would like. To see if there is a way to identify in the very, very near term, um, something to a- address that. What is apparently hampering their ability to do their job? If there is a possibility for, for a workaround while we look at trying to get them access to CGIS. What could we do now to address that, that issue that I think is a, um, a real barrier for PEOs doing their job as, as, as I have had it explained to me?
Well, I think that, uh, I think that. There needs to be a differentiation between, uh, the data that PEOs need to do their work and, um. Uh, that, that data being vehicle information, disabled placard information, um, some of which may be attainable from the Department of Licensing. And other data sources and, uh, the criminal information that can only be obtained through CGIS and, um, that information. Uh, it's my understanding that SPAG has other reasons for wanting and, um, I think that, that it might be best, uh, given the. The fact that there's an unfair labor practice on that, that, uh, we have that discussion offline.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay. Yes, please go ahead. There may be a need to have the conversation offline, but, but again, I wanna restate my interest in seeing if, um, we can, uh. Work to try to resolve some of those issues, because I think our ability to resolve some of those issues sooner rather than later. Um, you know, rather than it, you know. Punting it to this IDT, if there's something that we can do now, um, I think it's going to make that conversation that it, that is part of the IT, IDT go, go much better. So, um, yeah, just really wanna, uh, and I don't know if there have any, been any budget questions put in about, um, just trying to parse out. Um, what information they have access to now versus what information they would have access to under CGIS. I think that would be, um, a helpful budget, um, question to put in if we haven't already. Thanks.
Yes, Councilmember, I have, um, I'll, I'll look forward to talking with you about that.
Thank you. And, um. If there is any immediate, in, if there are immediate actions that are legislatively supported with funding. That would be definitely something I'd be interested in adding to this table of potential immediate investments as we, as we seek to find that long-term home. Appreciate you raising that, Councilmember. And again, I think it was all a little bit of a surprise, uh, to most of us in the discussion last time to, to have it, you know, expressly said on the, on the record that. We did not get access to all of this information about the potential barriers when we were discussing this, uh, with the previous administration. So. I really appreciate Greg, you digging in and digging fast on these issues. And again, if there is the opportunity to add to this table. To address, um, any funding needs for any immediate action to increase availability. Uh, to that data, then I'd be very interested in that. Thank you, Councilmember Herbal. Please go ahead, Greg.
I, I was just going to say, I, 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 um, I just got a note from S dot's Budget Director. They are looking into, um, those data issues. And, and as I've mentioned, the, the, the information I got back from SPD is that, that there's a, uh, a likely connection that can be made with, uh, DOL that can get back some of this data. And so it is, um, it's something that the city is working on now, um, is addressing some of these things. The CGIS, the CGIS piece is just, um, one different component that. That, uh, uh, as we can talk about the ULP offline.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Nelson, please go ahead.
So the, the mayor said that this wasn't necessarily a permanent, um, location to move them back to SPD. So I'm, I'm struggling to understand why we need an IDT, um, cause it seems like there's. Room for conversation, but, um, this, uh, our packet says we should consider the unique needs of PEOs and PEO supervisors. And if we wanna do that, shouldn't we, should we listen to the workers? There was a survey that says, uh, nearly eighty percent of Parking Enforcement Officers want to return to SPD. So I don't know how much stock we're putting in that, but we have some data there. Um, and, uh, the mayor's office has noted that this would, um. Like putting them back would, would give them access to SPDs, to the, to the databases that we're just discussing. So that solves that problem. And, um. Uh, I'm wondering if, um, and also I don't know how many, um, unfair labor practices, uh, complaints there are, but I think the move itself was one of them. So. Um, maybe just keeping them that in a, in SPD could solve for part of that, but, um. Would the, uh, would SPD's disciplinary system, OPA, um, provide a, access to all the informa- would they still be? Um, performing, will OPA still perform an oversight function of the Parking Enforcement Officers if they're outside of the department? That's one thing that you can follow up on with me. Um, but I was looking at this, uh, the, the proposed menu of statements of legislative intent in, in B says that they need adequate office space and fleet facilities. And I'm thinking about a parking lot. Um, so I don't know how many other places in the city have that, but, uh, the next page says the report may also recommend. Um, acquisition of new facilities. And so that makes me a little nervous that we might have to buy a facility to, to locate those vehicles. Um, so I'm just kind of signaling some concern there. And then I ha- I have a question about the overtime, the S dot, uh, ad funding for overtime. It says, uh, the overtime work supports stadium and other special events. We've had a conversation about that already being reimbursed by at least climate pledge arena. So, um. Uh, i- is this a separate item or? Would that contract have to be renegotiated because the PEOs are no longer in. SPD or S dot? Can you explain that?
Yeah. So in this particular case, the three-point-one-million is largely an amount that is necessar- necessary for, uh. S dot's overhead, uh, on, on the over, on the overtime costs. So it is, uh, it is not, uh, just the money that would be needed to pay the PEOs. It is also the money that is needed. Largely the money that is needed to, uh, cover S dot's internal overhead allocations.
And with the same, would that not be needed if it were to go to, um, uh, CSCC? But it would be necessary if it went to, for example, parks, just for example, for another.
It would not be needed if it, if it goes to a general fund-funded agency like, um, the CSCC or to, uh, SPD. Uh, if it, I, I can't speak for parks. I don't know their, their funding model well enough to, to be able to answer that question. And whether or not they tack overhead onto their, uh, onto their, uh, personnel costs.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much. Uh, colleagues, we'll continue to take into consideration some of the questions and comments that you brought up today as we think through this approach more. Uh, and, and develop this a little bit more, but I wanted to make sure to share it with you, with you. And, um, thank you for this initial feedback. Greg, thanks so much for walking us through that presentation. And again, colleagues, thanks for your, um. Your graciousness with considering the various omnibus approaches that I've outlined for some of the significant policy changes that were presented to us. Wanted to air those for the sake of transparency. All right, I think we're ready to move on to the next item.
The next item is S dot one-on-one-A-one. This item is offered by Councilmember Herbal with support from Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Nelson. Would add seven-point-five-million in twenty-twenty-three and seven-point-five-million. It would add seven point five million in twenty twenty three and seven point five million in twenty twenty four to restore funding for the Font Roy Way Boulevard project.
Councilmember herbal, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. Video here. Sorry about that. Thank you. So thank you, Calvin, for the description. Thank you as well to our transportation chair, councilmember Peterson, as well as councilmember Nelson for co-chairing. This item would provide funding to complete the Font Leroy Boulevard project. A bit of history on what happened to the funding. This was the only project in the twenty fifteen move levy that was fully funded with levy dollars. It was funded with sixteen million dollars in move levy funding, and that was because of the successful champion of of this this investment by former councilmember Rasmussen. He was, he played a significant role in bringing this forward for funding in the levy because of the strong community support. And we've, we've heard people, we've heard people contact us over the last few weeks to say that part of the reason why they moved, they they voted for the twenty fifteen move levy was because of the signs that said that the Font Leroy project would be would be funded. We heard from Don Brubuck of West Seattle Bike Connections yesterday noting that transportation, community and business groups worked to make the the project responsive to both citywide transportation goals and long held community needs. It improves mobility and safety for people walking, biking, riding buses, driving cars and trucks. The levy funds were placed on hold in twenty eighteen to avoid the duplication of activity with sound transit and a possible possible elevated line in that area. That the fact that we put those funds on hold in twenty eighteen was not an indication that we did not want the project to move forward if there was no conflict with sound transit. Unfortunately, those funds were were have since been diverted. And despite the fact that, as is noted in the narrative on this, sound transit has designed as a preferred alternative and option, a tunnel option that eliminates con conflict with the project. One hundred percent design was completed in twenty seventeen for the Font Leroy Boulevard project. And S dot has, when when placing the project on hold, they were very, very clear with me and with the community that that did not mean that the project would lose funding. So if it's not going to be levy funding, we need to find some other dollars to fulfill that commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. I am just leaning in, not seeing any additional comments on this one right now. I think we're good to go ahead. Thank you.
The next item is S dot one oh two A one, which is offered by councilmember Morales with support from councilmember Peterson and councilmember Lewis. It would add three point six million of general funds to S dot for home zone and vision zero implementation projects and ad provisos reserving those funds for those projects. The three point six million is represents the remainder of the red light camera funding that generally goes to the general fund under under S M C code, twenty percent of the red light camera revenues go to the safe schools and skate, safe, excuse me, pedestrian and traffic improvement fund. And this would represent the remaining eighty percent of camera resources.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Calvin. So as he said, this C B A would bring money back to S dot that was diverted to the general fund in twenty eighteen. This would fund vision zeros, pedestrian spot improvements, traffic calming, home zones, and would also harmonize with the twenty percent that the mayor has reserved for safe routes to school in twenty twenty three and twenty four. And part of the reason we want to do that, I'm going to share some some figures that we we heard this summer in the Transportation Committee. So in twenty eighteen, sixty one percent of people killed by people driving cars were walking, using a mobility device or biking. Seventy one percent were hit and killed in districts one, two, and five. Sixty three percent were in districts two and five, areas of the city with more parking spaces than sidewalks, hundreds of miles more for car infrastructure than safe infrastructure for people who can't drive. And in twenty twenty one, as I've said before, fifty six percent of all traffic fatalities occurred in the streets of South Seattle. Ninety three percent of people who were non-drivers killed by people driving lost their lives on multi-lane arterials. In addition to that, just since Saturday, three people who were not driving were hit by people in car, driving cars in South Seattle, including two people just this morning who were killed in Georgetown. At least one of these was a hit and run. So all of these are situations that could have been avoided if we were investing in safety infrastructure. If we were investing in sidewalks, hardened center lines, traffic circles, crosswalks, speed bumps, chicanes. The fact that we haven't done this, that all those people died on streets designed by the city over the last five generations, that's a policy choice. And we can make a different choice by investing in safe infrastructure. By providing ongoing funding for home zones, we can move the program from its multi-year pilot status to a full-fledged program in the city. This will bring more of the low-cost, high-reward, traffic calming options to the city. For the cost of one sidewalk block, we could fund five square blocks of home zones with this program. And with the funding proposed, we could do that several times a year across the city in places that are lacking proper infrastructure. The idea with this amendment is that we make decisions about where those five blocks a year would be funded based on based on the data of which areas need it the most. So for now, that would be the first round of emphasis would be in district two in twenty twenty three and twenty four until the share of fatalities in the South End is on par with the rest of the city. Following that, the idea would be that funds would be appropriated to the next area of greatest need. Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much, council member. Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I'm already on here as a sponsor, but I do just want to indicate that it was a great pleasure to work with councilmember Morales and for our offices to work together and coordinate on this really important budget action. And I underscore the urgency and the necessity of moving forward with these critical investments to really emphasize the the attainable progress if there's really dedicated focus and allocation of resource and follow through on this really essential infrastructure. I rode a bike into work today. There were several parts of of my my route that were unprotected and and that exposed me to to potential vulnerability. And we really need to make sure, especially as we're getting, as we're being reminded of weather that tends to be wetter and darker in Seattle. Roadways that are defined primarily for single-vehicle traffic pose a hazard to people using other modes that has to be and can be fixed. So very proud to support this and looking forward to building on this progress and reaching vision zero.
Thank you, and thanks for your cosponsorship on that, Councilmember Herbl.
Thank you. I too am interested and would like to add my name as as a co-sponsor. I do have a question about the current state of the requirement to dedicate automated camera enforcement revenue to infrastructure that makes the infrastructure that makes walking and biking more safe. I I remember there was over a period of time, an effort to scale up that commitment. I think it started out, it's ten percent, we increased it to twenty percent. People's acceptance of automated traffic enforcement increases exponentially when they see that the funds gathered through automated traffic enforcement are actually invested in this kind of infrastructure that that benefits people who who walk in areas that are that are less safe and bike in areas that that are less safe. So I'm just interested to know is the proposed budget in compliance with the dedication requirement? And would it be helpful for purposes of identifying a fund source for this to increase that percentage from twenty percent to some other number?
The proposed budget does comply with the current S M C code, which is twenty percent going to S dot for these purposes or for 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 not for these purposes, but for the school, the school safety purposes. Certainly, you could consider changing that with you have the authority to decide what that should be. The proposed budget does assume that those resources are supporting the general fund in general, so it would have a balancing effect on the general fund.
Councilmember, did you have a follow up on that, Councilmember Herbl? You're on mute.
Sure. I I mean, I totally understand that if we earmark more of these doll, these camera enforcement dollars towards this infrastructure that it will have an impact on other general fund supported functions of the city. But to the extent that we want a vision zero to be a sustainable program, it might be worth looking for a more sustainable, ongoing fun fun source that is more pegged to 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 meet the need. I did receive a a line of of questions from 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 some constituents who are concerned about continued expansion of automated traffic enforcement. And it just seems like, again, if if we are going to continue to use this as a tool and and we are, I believe, and the state has given us authorization to expand automatic traffic enforcement beyond the block, the box, the bus lanes, school zones and and red light cameras. They've given us the authority to expand also to areas that are designated as drag areas and areas that are on on parkways. I I just think that it would be good to look at providing some some assurances that that the funds associated with this automated enforcement are are funds that are directly being invested to a percentage larger than twenty percent in making these communities safer for for walking and biking.
Calvin, I see you have a handout.
Yeah, councilmembers, I just wanted to to follow up on that. There is actually different state authority for the different kinds of cameras. And so for school zone cameras, hundred percent of that has to go to support the the school safety programs for the block, the box, and and so the new authority, half of that has to go to support the state's accessibility fund, and then half of it has to be used for accessibility funds for for us. That's also transportation reserved. The only state source is for the red light cameras. That's the only one that where we have the ability to go into general, general government.
Very helpful. Thank you. Okay, great. I'm not seeing any additional hands on this, any, anything else. Okay. So let's keep moving. And then after this, I'll have an update on timing, okay?
The next item is S dot one oh three A one. It is offered by councilmember Peterson with support from councilmember Herbold and councilmember Morales. This item would deploy, would would double the size of the school zone camera program over the next two years. There are two elements to this, the S dot element, which would fund the the program spending. For that purposes, we this C B A would add one million dollars in twenty twenty four as a placeholder, as we find out what that actual number will be as the the implementation is developed. And then to implement with the expectation that it will be a much larger number over time. But then it adds money in twenty twenty three, one million and one point seven million in twenty twenty four to the police department to expand the camera programs to actually get the number of cameras out there to double that amount, since they are the ones who actually contract with a third-party vendor for getting the cameras operational and holding those operational costs.
Thank you. We have councilmember Peterson. Hello, Chair of Transportation.
Thank you, Chair Moskata, and thank you, Calvin. Colleagues, this amendment would double the school zone speed enforcement camera program, which is consistent with vision zero goals to increase pedestrian safety for schoolchildren. This is just one safety tool, but it is an effective safety tool for several reasons. It protects vulnerable young people trying to walk safely to and from school. It removes the need for police response in the field, and it ultimately generates net revenues, which would be added to more vision zero programs. So this plan is to invest the one million in twenty twenty three to begin the additional installations and invest more in twenty twenty four to complete the doubling. The budget action would enable the installation and operation of thirty five additional cameras benefiting at least eighteen additional school zones across Seattle. Historically, these speed cameras can raise an average of three hundred thousand each in gross revenue, which greatly exceeds the cost to install each camera. Colleagues, there are approximately one hundred and three physical locations for Seattle Public Schools, which means that currently eighty percent of the schools do not benefit from school zone speed enforcement camera protections. This amendment is an efficient way to keep schoolchildren safe. And as we expect future budget gaps, it can raise additional revenue that we can reinvest in school safety traffic improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to be added as a co-sponsor to this item.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Lewis adding his name as a sponsor to one oh three. I just want to make sure for the record, councilmember Herbold had asked to be added to one oh two previously, and I don't think I reiterated that as I usually do, it's just for the purposes of the clerks, if we could get councilmember Herbold added to S dot one zero two, and then councilmember Lewis, councilmember Lewis adding to one zero three, councilmember Herbl.
Thank you. I just want to flag a few questions that I'm hoping we can work on answering as this proposal moves forward. I want to make sure that the percentage of cameras that are placed in communities of color are 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 there's an analysis, I should say, of of where cameras are are placed so that we are make sure that we have an equitable balance across across the city. I know a lot of what drives that is is actual traffic dat- data about about collisions and speeding. But I I would really appreciate having an analysis of where where cameras are located currently. And then there's also been a request that we determine whether or not there's a way for the initial violations for cameras to be a a warning instead of a ticket. Apparently, there's a data point that ninety five percent of Seattle residents don't receive a second ticket at specific camera locations after receiving the first. So their 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 behavior is changed at that particular location. So I believe that we should look to see whether or not it's possible to change people's behavior with with a warning. And then just of flagging whether or not there is ability for Seattle Municipal Court to do mitigation of of these tickets, just like they do with other tickets as well. Thanks.
Cal, did you have any thoughts about that? Any any indication of that there's currently a warning policy or reduced fine for the first violation?
I think I'll have to do a little more research into how the the court engages in these issues and get back to you. I think there there may be ways to direct more of how the deployment of this program goes forward. Any deployment of cameras would generally be timed to the opening of the new school year, so there would be some time to to. Any deployment of cameras would generally be timed to the opening of the new school year, so there would be some time to to the departments would need some time to already develop their their program anyway, so if there are specific issues that councilmembers want to make sure are included, that's something we could we could draft out as well.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful just to get a little more information. I had similarly had questions about from, you know, equity lens perspective. They are relatively high. We also want people to slow down and not injure any kiddos or families. We want anybody playing bingo, I just said kiddo. We also want to make sure that that we deter, you know, fast drivers in that area, but I think it's high for a reason, right? Because there's lives at stake, and so I I like the idea of looking into the equity information a little bit more, but applying these across the city in an equitable way as well to bring in more revenue and slow people down across our neighbors neighborhoods. Calvin, you had something you were add?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that really the the point of all these programs is for them to put themselves out of business. You know, the the goal is to to get people to stop behaving poorly in these areas so that we don't have to deploy the cameras. I just wanted to highlight that.
Yeah, and if there's equitable placement, obviously more just from a racial justice perspective in terms of le- less likelihood for bias for individuals pulling people over, but they need to be placed across our city and not just in certain neighborhoods. Uh, councilmember Herbold, did you have follow up to that? No? Okay, well, a leftover hand, councilmember Nelson, please go ahead.
Like to be added as a cosponsor, please.
Excellent. Well, I'm going to show all of our interest in this and add my name as a cosponsor too. Look forward to getting the answers to those questions, Cal, to to round out this discussion. Anything else, councilmember Peterson?
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay, councilmember Nelson, councilmember Nelson adding her name as a cosponsor, councilmember Lewis adding her name, and councilmember Muscata as well. Okay, we're moving on. Okay, so here's my announcement. We have fifteen more amendments. We have an hour and ten minutes, so about four minutes, three to four minutes an amendment. I'm gonna start keeping a little timer on my end to try to keep us moving, but there's still should be plenty of time for discussion and questions as well. All right, Cal.
The next item is S dot one oh four A one from councilmember Peterson with support from councilmember Herbold and councilmember Lewis. It would add nine point seven million ongoing to S dot for bridge maintenance programs.
Yeah, let's go, councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Chair Muscata. Colleagues, the purpose of this amendment is to keep Seattle safe and connected by ensuring we are funding the bare minimum of the auditor's recommendation for annual maintenance of our multimodal bridges. As we know from that disturbing bridge audit we obtained in twenty twenty, our city auditor recommends investing a range of thirty four million to a hundred and two million annually for maintenance of Seattle's aging bridges. Therefore, this amendment proposes nine point seven million to lift our investments up to that minimum amount of thirty four million. In the wake of the hard lessons learned from the two and a half year closure of the West Seattle Bridge, the disturbing revelations of the bridge audit, the periodic malfunctioning of other multimodal bridges, and S dot's decision to decline the one hundred million in bond funding that we had authorized in twenty twenty one. It's disappointing that bridges were not better funded in the proposed budget. So it's up to us to do better, and this amendment can accomplish what's expected from residents, businesses, and workers to keep Seattle's aging bridges open and safe to keep our communities connected and our economy moving. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Herbold, please go ahead. Oh, is that a leftover hand? Okay. Leftover hand, no problem. Councilmember Peterson, thank you for your constant focus on these issues. I'm not seeing any additional people sign up for comments. We can move on.
Next item is S dot one oh five A one, also from councilmember Peterson with support from councilmember Sawant and councilmember Juarez. This item would add three point six million to S dot to fund all seventeen of the neighborhood's large projects under consideration with the Move Seattle Oversight Committee currently.
Please go ahead, councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Chair Muscata. Colleagues, as you know, the Neighborhood Street Fund enables communities to propose pedestrian and bike safety projects that are then implemented by our Seattle Department of Transportation. The Move Seattle Levy Oversight Committee has only enough funding to build approximately nine of the seventeen qualified projects put forward recently by communities throughout Seattle. The list is provided on page two of the amendment. Several of these projects enable children to get to school safely. There are also sidewalk improvements, new crosswalks, new pedestrian signals. So while the total cost of all projects is about seven six million, there's only four million available from the Move Seattle Levy. That's why we have this amendment, to invest in additional three point six to complete all of these important community-driven projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember Peterson. I believe council president may have something on this. Yes, please go ahead.
I will be brief, because that's what we're supposed to do. I have, I just want to say this. First of all, thank you, councilperson Peterson. We've been working on trying to get these projects funded for safe streets, the neighborhood. And more importantly, we have had Northgate Elementary, Hazel Wolf, Jane Adams, Nathan Hale, and Ingram High School have all been part of the seventeen project, none of them being funded. Again, our priority has always been around community centers, light rails, bus stations, schools, facilities where our elders live, and so I want to thank councilperson Peterson for, again, picking up the the, what's the word? I can't think of it. I'm getting tired, you know, whatever. Thank you, because I'm tired of talking about this. This has been going on for so long. So thank you.
Thumbs up at that one. Thank you very much. All right. Any additional comments? Oh, thank you. Let's go ahead and move on then.
Next item is S dot one oh six A one, also from councilmember Peterson with support from councilmember Strauss and councilmember Lewis. It would add a new CIP project in S dot for the Northeast Forty Fifth Street Bridge I five Crossing Improvement Project and add one point five million for that project.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Let's go to councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Chair Muscata. Colleagues, this Northeast Forty Fifth Street I five Overpass Pedestrian Safety Project is an overdue Vision Zero project that, if implemented, can improve safety of both pedestrians and cyclists. The Forty Fifth Street I five overpass is a stretcher, a treacherous segment with narrow sidewalks, very low barriers to the I five lanes below, no barrier for the traffic lanes on this busy arterial. The plan is to install safety fencing on all four edges that's decorative, illuminated, improve safety for both pedestrians and cyclists who frequently use those sidewalks. These improvements were promised as part of the twenty fifteen Move Seattle Levy, but not completed. The council had the foresight to fund the design work as part of the twenty twenty two budget. Thank you very much for doing that. There was lots of progress made with with Wash dot and S dot on this in terms of design and costing out what could be done. So today's budget amendment would finally implement it. Colleagues, this is a first last mile connection to the new light rail station. It connects an urban center to an urban village. It's supported by pedestrian and bike advocates. I encourage your support to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Strauss, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, councilmember Peterson, for bringing this forward. This project is outside of District Six and is the last or first mile connection to District Six residents to the light rail since we don't have light rail on the west side of Seattle, and it'll take a long time to get it. This station serves as the closest station to many District Six residents. And as you'll hear later, I received many Vision Zero requests. This has been one that I've received many times over. Uh, thank you, councilmember Peterson, for bringing this forward. Let's get her done.
Thank you so much. Any additional comments? Seeing then, let's keep moving on.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Edin Sisich with Council Central Staff, I'll cover the next agenda item, which is S dot one oh seven A one. Sponsored by councilmember Lewis, along with co- co-sponsors, councilmember Strauss and councilmember Morales. I would like to point out that there's a misprint on the amendment sheet published to the agenda, so it's listing councilmember Peterson as the co-sponsor instead of councilmember Strauss, and we will correct that for future discussions.
Okay, thank you.
So this council budget action would add two point five million dollars of transportation fund to S dot to complete the Thomas Street redesigned CIP project. This project was indefinitely paused in the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four proposed budget, and S dot estimates a two point five million dollar funding gap to go to complete the project as originally envisioned.
Thank you so much. Let's turn it over to councilmember Lewis.
Uh, thank you, Chair Muscata. So here we are again to talk about the Thomas Street project. I think my office has supported reinserting Thomas Street as a project every year that I've served on the council. And I do want to thank councilmember Strauss, not just for his cosponsorship of this item, but for his work in the office of councilmember Bagshaw and my predecessor, councilmember Bagshaw, for her work prior to my my service in really bringing this project together and getting it in the budget in the first place. So you know, a big coalition has come together in the last few days. And colleagues should have received a letter signed by Seattle Center Foundation, Parks Foundation, Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, Climate Pledge Arena, among other signatories, and I won't go through the whole list. And I appreciate the Urbanist distributing a signatory of the letter and also distributing some kind words on this project over the last couple of days and writing about it. This project is really essential to stitch together the South Lake Union neighborhood with a multimodal street that allows a connection to the increasingly activated Seattle Center Campus and Climate Pledge Arena. A significant number of the people attending programs at the New Climate Pledge are accessing the Seattle Center Campus via Thomas Street. And that is only expected to expand and grow. We have a unique opportunity for placemaking and to really have a centerpiece of the South Lake Union neighborhood be a place that emphasizes different modes of travel, a space that can be programmed for community festivals, a place that seeds a space previously reserved only for single occupancy vehicles to spaces that can be reclaimed by the community. Uh, this is a really important investment, and I really appreciate the community that's come together and reached out to the council to support this and look forward to continuing to discuss this over the course of the budget and do hope to see it included in the ultimate final package that we put together as a council.
Thank you so much. Any additional comments? Seeing then, let's keep moving. Chair Muscata, if I might, before we, before Edin describes S dot one oh eight, I wanted to acknowledge that there was a staff error on this amendment, and we put it together not accurately reflecting the the sponsors intent due to a miscommunication. And so for for discussion today, we have revised the title and summary only to describe the ad. The offsetting reduction that was described in the amendment wasn't the the sponsors intent. So just wanted to acknowledge that there was an error in the amendment sheet. We'll update it later, and this is more accurately reflecting councilmember Morales' intent, and I will turn it over to Edin to describe the ad.
Thank you, Deputy Director Ali. So the next agenda item is S dot one oh eight A one. It's sponsored by councilmember Morales with councilmembers Strauss and Lewis as co-sponsors. This council budget action would add three hundred thousand dollars of transportation funding to S dot's Bike Master Plan protected bike lanes specifically for the replacement of plastic bollards with concrete barriers on currently protected bike lanes in Council District Two. And this council budget action also imposes a proviso on the total cost estimates for this project, which is one point three million dollars.
Let's go ahead, councilmember Morales.
Thank you. Thank you, Edin, and thank you, Director Pinucci. So as Edin just said, the CBA would, this CBA would proviso the one point three million in S dot. It would allow us to upgrade the four point six miles of buffered bike lanes that we have in South Seattle from the paint and plastic posts to concrete barriers known colloquially as Toronto barriers. I spoke in the last CBA about why this is so important. We have over half of tra- traffic fatalities in South Seattle. And these, you know, what we have right now are these paint buffers and plastic posts as bike lanes. This is the highest standard of infrastructure that we have in South Seattle. These don't actually offer any protection, as anybody who's seen them driven over these plastic bollards knows. In fact, this design standard is what's really been used as temporary lanes in cities across the globe. They were used for temporary bike lanes during COVID. All these cities, Mexico, New York, Paris, Montreal, are all replacing those temporary, that temporary infrastructure with permanent safe concrete protection. We do have that kind of protection bike lane in Seattle in places like Green Lake and the U District and Uptown. So this amendment would offer the same protection to folks in the South End, which is especially important as critical safety projects for the South End keep getting delayed by S dot. Witnessed the recent announcement to again delay construction of the bike path in Beacon Hill in favor of a third study of that project. So I, we distributed a memo last night, colleagues saw the kinds of upgrades that we're talking about that can increase safety for non-drivers. It's been documented by the National Association of City Traffic Officials and would make a positive climate impact, as Portland State University noted in their study, showing that on average sixty percent of drivers would switch out of at least some car trips for biking if they had safe infrastructure available to them. So this is not just good for road maintenance and for overall road budgets, knowing that bikes cause less damage on roads than cars. It also helps reduce our CO two emissions. It decreases the likelihood of dangerous vehicle collisions. It increases overall community health. And importantly, it gives the one in three non-drivers in our community a safe place to move around the city. And that is what I have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councilmember Morales. Did you say that half of all of the deaths related to pedestrian and bike accidents are in the South End, indeed?
In twenty twenty one, fifty six percent were in the South End.
Wow, okay, thank you for lifting that up. Cal, anything else on on that statistic or anything else on the amendment?
Nothing to add.
Okay, thank you very much, councilmember. Let's keep moving.
Good afternoon. This is Eric McConaughey on the Council of Central Staff. This next item is S dot three oh one A one. It's a statement of legislative intent. It would request that S dot provide recommendations to improve coordination on constituent issue reporting and response. Primary sponsor for this slide is councilmember Strauss. And the additional sponsors are the council president Juarez and councilmember Lewis. Thank you.
Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Eric. I meet with District Six residents every week as part of office hours and hold regular town hall events like I did last week. Many people during office hours and these these events come up to me with Vision Zero requests from crosswalks to sidewalks to stop signs to traffic circles, I can tell you. Second and Bowden, Third Avenue, it's seventy six, seventy third, seventy second, forty third. These are just the ones that are off the top of my head. Eighth and Market, I mean, fifty eighth at at Thirty Second, at Twentieth, at at Fifteenth, I mean, almost every time I host office hours, there's somebody with a Vision Zero request. And so I I would like formal formal direction from the department on how to relay these requests in a way that addresses these concerns. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councilmember. Any additional comments? Okay, thank you. Let's keep going.
Other councilmembers, Kedal Freeman, Council Central Staff, the next budget action is S dot three oh two A one. This request and a report from S dot on the estimated cost of many factions installing historic street name signs. The work will be done in coordination with the city archivist. Both entities would identify the historic street names for those Seattle neighborhoods that were once separately incorporated municipalities like Old Ballard, Georgetown and Leschi, and estimate the cost of providing Brown and Green Street signs such as one might see in the International District for those formerly incorporated areas. Our report would be to the Transportation Seattle Utilities, Seattle Public Utilities Committee. Committee by midsummer. Sponsored by Councilmember Strauss and co-sponsored by Councilmember Morales and Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, Ballard was the second largest city in King County and seventh largest city in Washington State until 1907, when that dead horse showed up in our reservoir. We had our own street names. I'm currently at my district office at the Ballard, next to the Ballard Library at the customer service center. Right now, the street sign says 56th and 22nd Avenue Northwest. Before 1907, this was State Street and Third Avenue. Other jurisdictions within our city that were annexed in 1907 were Bryant, Leshai, West Seattle, and Georgetown. And so this request is, I know we've got online maps, we've got historical maps about Ballard. I don't necessarily know for these other former cities. And I think it would be interesting to know how much would it cost to replace these street signs that identify what the former streets were. Right now, we've got tiles on some corners in Ballard of what the former street names were, but it's not consistent through all streets. And so, so as I'm not just representing Ballard in my district, I did make the request for other cities that were annexed. Would love to know what the figure is, because if it's a reasonable amount of money, I think it would be a great way to add vibrancy to our city's history. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you so much. Any additional comments on that? Thank you for sharing that history. All right, let's keep going.
Item SDOT 303A1 is offered by Councilmember Lewis with support from Councilmember Morales and Councilmember Peterson. It is a statement of legislative intent requesting a report from SDOT on parking rate policy. There are two questions to be addressed. One is specifically the standards and performance goals that the city has in code and to sort of review those and make any recommendations to make changes to those policies, which have been largely unchanged since 2010. And then the second element would be to look at the state authorizing legislation and to see if there are any potential policy updates that the city could pursue in Olympia.
Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things that I looked at over the course of this budget cycle was the potential of pursuing a revenue source that the city of Portland uses, where there is a small surcharge on parking that I believe they call a climate fee to capture the impact of driving and parking on global climate and use that money for alternative investments in transportation. Investments of that sort may be preempted by overly restrictive state language on how we can essentially charge for parking and how that money can be distributed. So this is an opportunity to queue up a policy discussion that looks at what is purely within our power to regulate on-street parking and where we could get some more flexibility from the state to diversify that tool of essentially leasing our public right-of-way space for people to temporarily store their private vehicles and reinvest that money into some of the transportation priorities we've been talking about for most of the afternoon that are desperately under-resourced and need more support. So that is what we're trying to do here, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any additional hands, Councilmember. Thank you for the example from Portland. Let's keep going.
The next item is SDOT 502B1. This item would amend some, would make amendments to some proposed budget legislation related to Seattle Transit Measures spending categories. The proposed budget has a proposal to increase the annual spending limit for transit capital from 3 million to 6 million. This proposed budget action here would increase that by a further 3.5 million and make a change within the budget to divert an additional 3.5 million from of Seattle Transit Measure funding to transit capital projects. It's offered by Councilmember Peterson with support from Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember Nelson.
Thanks, Councilmember Peterson. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Muscata. Colleagues, thanks to a new state law, Seattle residents 18 and under are eligible for free youth passes or for youth fairs when riding transit, including buses, which means our Seattle Transit Measure, also known as STBD, no longer needs to provide approximately 3.5 million annually. Due to the increased needs for transit-related capital improvements, a lot of what's been discussed today, this budget action would allow us to use, at least temporarily, that annual savings to fund the numerous transit-related capital projects we are eager to fund. This additional flexibility would be just an up-to amount, but at least we will have the authority in hand. As we know, transit-related capital projects improve safety as well as reliability and speed for public mass transit, particularly for buses. This in turn makes the operation of the buses more efficient and can attract more transit riders. So in the face of budget gaps this year and next, this will provide important flexibility for our increased capital needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Additional comments on this one? I just got a quick question on this, Councilmember Peterson, and of course, Central Staff, if you want to answer as well. Do we have projects identified for the funds that are proposed to be transferred to the transportation improvement set through the CBA?
Yeah. No, and that is so that you can work out with your balancing package. This is basically a source of funds that you could use for your, for the balancing package.
Thank you, Calvin.
So I do have some better detail into what's behind the proposed spending in the executive's budget that I'll be happy to share with you as you're considering putting together your budget stack.
Okay, that sounds good. But thank, yeah, thank you. Thanks for identifying resources. Anything else? Let's keep going.
Next item is SDOT 504A. This item passes new legislation to impose a micro-mobility company tax of 0.25, well, 25 cents per ride within the city of Seattle. It would also add 540,000 to FAS to make the necessary systems improvements to begin collecting the tax. It's offered by Councilmember Lewis with support from Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember Morales.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Muscata. So this is another proposal, transportation proposal that comes from Portland, Oregon. When they adopted their micro-mobility policies in 2018, one of the policies they attached was a 25 cent per-use tax on folks who are using the micro-mobility platforms to create a dedicated fund for the expansion, maintenance, and protection of bike infrastructure. The proposal is indicated, I don't know if Calvin indicated what the projection would raise, but estimated to be about $716,000 per year, based on the most recent estimates. I think that we can all fully expect that that number is only going to grow as these micro-mobility platforms become more popular and more widespread. In the city of Seattle, there was a good sightline piece for council members who are interested discussing the merits of this approach from July 11, 2018 by Michael Anderson, indicating that the investment, creating a dedicated and fully-owned source for this kind of infrastructure could create an organic relationship between the viability of these modes of transit and their safety and how broadly they're adopted. I don't know if it's included in the language of the amendment here on terms of the average cost, but I, and Calvin can maybe correct me, but I think the average trip for one of these scooter rides right now runs about $6 in the aggregate cost. So this would essentially add 25 cents to, to that. My, my personal Lime bike trip to work today, I think, ran $9.25. So it would be $9.50 under this policy. So with that, I will turn it back over to the chair, but I do think it's important as we look at how we're funding some of these transportation priorities, to look at some of the activity that's happening in the city in ways we can broaden our, our base to contribute to funding a lot of this necessary infrastructure in an ongoing sustained way. And I think this proposal goes towards that.
Great. Thanks so much. Cal, Calvin?
I just wanted to add that Councilmember Lewis's proposed legislation does specify the specific uses of the tax proceeds to do the administrative costs as well as the programs he's described, and that it would include a, it would, it would forego the tax for rides that are under the incomparable rates that the micro-mobility companies charge.
Okay. Just a quick question for the sponsor. Is there already, have you already done sort of a stakeholder assessment on what some of the mobility advocates who really want to promote this type of alternative to a car, if they have any feedback for us yet?
I've consulted with like Seattle Neighborhood Greenways and some of the other organizations we've been doing stakeholdering on, on Thomas Street, for example, but haven't really received a firm response. But, you know, happy to continue having these discussions as we put a budget together, because obviously we do simultaneously have a very long list of demands for increasing infrastructure that this tax aims to develop. And reconciling those things, I mean, I would personally rather have this funding source and have some more of those projects over time, but it's a trade-off that we can discuss as we reconcile our pragmatic ambitions with our revenue.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And just one more quick question for Calvin before I turn it over to the other hand. Is there any additional data from other cities on a similar, is that what you mentioned? That do we have the data on similarly situated cities that have increased the amount and whether or not that affects ridership?
I don't have anything that, 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 the, one of the difficulties with micro-mobility, with trying to project micro-mobility is we really only have the reporting that's been done recently. We've seen a lot of fluctuation in the use, and we, definitely the pandemic has changed how the companies have deployed. So we do get some information from SDOT about what those deployments look like, which include what the average cost looks like. But it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit removed. It's not a direct response to us. It's, it's, it's not the most complete data.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I see a few hands. Just before I go to Councilmember Solon, Councilmember Lewis, did you have a response to that?
Yeah, I would just indicate, I mean, if you go to Lime's website, for example, it, you know, it indicates that there's been 2 million individual trips in the city of Portland since 2018. I don't know how outdated that is, but, I mean, these micro-mobility platforms are still very viable platforms in the city of Portland for, for whatever that is worth and assessing whether it's had an impact. The other thing I would indicate is that a lot of these platforms have equity or other kinds of programs that people can enter into. And the way that this legislation is written, it envisions exempting those trips. So there is a way to build equity into the pricing into a tax like this by essentially excluding the trips that are taken by people who have accounts, who have been accepted into subsidized or equity programs by the platform. So there is a way to build equity into the tax, which is an important thing to point out.
Okay, thanks, Councilmember Solon.
I do not support this budget amendment, creating this new tax. The proposed tax has a similar structure to a sales tax in that it is a tax on each transaction the customer pays, like sales taxes. Because it is a tax on each transaction, it is virtually inevitable that the companies will pass this tax directly on to working people. Sales taxes are notoriously regressive, with poor and working-class people paying a much higher percentage of their income on the taxes than the wealthy. And I believe this will be the same. I mean, I don't see how it's different. In some cases, I have supported even regressive taxes if they fund essential services. So each time I have made a point to say that elected officials need to bring progressive revenues, because in our city, in our state, we badly need taxes on the rich, not on working and poor people. However, in this case, the Central Staff analysis says that it would be raised $716,000 per year. Outrageously, the administrative costs for the first year would be $540,000. So in the first year, 75% of the revenue from the tax would be used to administer its own collection. Hopefully, that would be a better margin in the future years. However, on balance, this is an incredibly weak and regressive way to raise tax revenue. It is striking, though not surprising, that Democrats on the council are just not willing to, they don't, just don't have the, you know, political will or the courage to bring forward something like developer impact fees. It is also striking that this regressive tax, raising very little money, has required three council sponsors and co-sponsors, but not one other council member has been willing so far to co-sponsor the budget amendment to increase the big business tax rate of the Amazon tax, which is a very progressive tax. It's not a deeply regressive tax, like the sales tax. And sales taxes are as bad as they come in terms of regressive taxes. But increases in the Amazon tax can also raise sufficient funds to reverse all the austerity in the mayor's proposed budget. This contrast shows where the Democratic Party elected officials have really stand and how much political power big business has in City Hall to avoid paying even their, you know, beginning of their fair share of taxes.
All right, we're going to move on. Are there any additional comments on this one? Okay. Thanks so much. Let's keep going.
All right. Good afternoon. Lish Whitson, Council Central Staff. SDOT 5051A1 is the last transportation action in front of you today. It's sponsored by Councilmember Peterson with Councilmembers Strauss and Lewis. This council budget action would adopt legislation to increase the vehicle license fee by $10 from $40 to $50 per vehicle. $50 is the maximum amount the city may charge in vehicle license fees under state law. And the end of this year is the first time the city acting as the Seattle Transportation Benefit District is authorized to impose a $50 fee.
Thank you. I'm going to turn back. Oh, so sorry, we're not done.
There's a lot more to this, sorry.
A lot more. We are here for it.
In 2023, the increased fee is estimated to bring in $2 million for transportation purposes, and in 2024, an ongoing, it's estimated to raise $4 million a year. The proposed bill would, proposed action would allocate $1.5 million of 2023 funds to pedestrian improvements on the Northeast 45th Street. I've overpassed this council budget action, doesn't allocate those funds to the CIP project. That will be done, that will need to be done to allow the improvements to be built, which shouldn't be much trouble. You saw earlier this afternoon SDOT 106A1, which creates that CIP project. The remainder of the funding in 2023, approximately $460,000, would be allocated to bridge maintenance projects. Starting in 2024, the funds would be split infinitely between bridge maintenance and pedestrian safety. And the council budget action includes provisos ensuring that the funds that are allocated in 2023 are used for their intended purpose.
All right. Thank you, Lish. Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Muscata, and a nod to my brave co-sponsors, Councilmember Strauss and Lewis. Colleagues, as we confront tough decisions in the coming weeks due to budget constraints, wanted to offer up an additional source of revenue for transportation safety projects. This amendment proposes to increase the vehicle license fee by $10, which would raise an additional $4 million per year. Because it starts in the middle of the year, it would raise just 2 million in 2023. And what I wanted to do with that 2 million is have it go to some projects that we talked about earlier. I know we're not really identifying sources of funds for a lot of these projects that we're putting forward, but I wanted to do that with a couple of these. So in 2023, 1.5 million would go to that. So in twenty twenty-three, uh one and a half million would go to that Forty-Fifth Street project, so therefore it could be fully funded. The remaining uh portion for bridge maintenance, but then going forward is when it would really open up. So you've got two million a year for Vision Zero safety projects and two million a year for multimodal bridge maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Um council members, are there any questions on this one? I see a few hands, but I can't tell if Councilmember Lewis's hand is an old one.
Uh old hand.
Old hand, okay. Councilmember Sawant, you are up.
Just like in the previous agenda item, I do not support this proposal to increase regressive taxes that disproportionately impact poor and working class people. The vehicle license fee, also known as CAR TAP, is one of the most regressive taxes in Washington State. In fact, working class people are so outraged by it that the right wing has been able to demagogically use that outrage in repeated attempts to defund transportation at the state level. It's just stunning that these, this keeps coming back from the Democrats and I and I absolutely oppose it.
Okay, thank you. Um uh can I ask Central Staff the current breakdown for the VLF spin plan? Is that is that too broad of a question? Should I follow up with you?
Yeah, we can get you that information.
All right.
It is spread across various CIP projects.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Herbal.
And um this may be in a uh time uh limited program, but wasn't there a a VLF rebate program for in uh in incomeligible fee people?
I see Cal's hand, please go ahead, Cal.
So um it's a little bit complicated because um under the Transportation Benefit Authority, uh we have historically used VLF uh for the the previous transit measure and that measure included a rebate program for VLF. Uh there is not currently one for the um the 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 standard uh uh VLF fee, if you will.
Uh any additional comments, Councilmember Herbal on that? Okay. All right, great. Well, I look forward to getting additional information um from Central Staff, and I know that that will be shared with the floor. And um appreciate as well any any efforts right now to uh look at revenue. Really appreciate the collective thinking across the council on different strategies there. So thank you for bringing those forward. Uh let's go ahead. I think there was one walk on here. All right, did we get Greg Doss back for this one? Is that what's happening? No, you're cut, you're getting in here for the next one, okay. Calvin, thanks for rounding us out on this one.
S dot walk on one is offered by Councilmember Strauss. It is related actually to the twenty twenty-two budget. Uh it would redirect one hundred thousand of REIT funds from Parks to S dot for water service on the Leary Triangle.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss.
Uh thank you, Chair Muscata. This is, the future work of this will be wrapped up into that brewery district request that I had a couple minutes ago. We started with the Leary Triangle. It's a corner, it's a triangular piece of S dot property that looks like a park. It has been rehabilitated this year. The water meter has been reinstated. Uh there was a strong desire to have a dog park there, and then once we get that work done, we're gonna look at closing Ninth Avenue uh between Leary Way and forty-seven, I believe it is. Um and so as we were doing this work, uh the Parks Department was uh not the right department. We we thought we were gonna start rolling with the dog park straight out the gate last year. That work has slowed down. We're we're gonna get to it shortly. I've heard positive remarks from the the Parks Department about the dog park. All of that said, S dot's done the work. We're hoping to be able to transfer this money over to S dot so they can finish the work. Um and then we can address the dog park as soon as possible. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Comments, Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you. If we're taking co-sponsors for this, I'd be happy to co-sponsor.
Oh, nice.
Sounds like that is welcomed. Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Peterson, co-sponsoring walk on one, S dot from Councilmember Strauss. All right, I'm not seeing anything else on the S dot agenda. So let's thank our our team from Central Staff for all of the work on that last item, and we're gonna get done on time today. Uh we have, I believe, two amendments that have been filed and I think a walk on uh for this section. So we're gonna, we're gonna make it. Welcome back, Greg Doss.
Thank you, uh Madam Chair. Um happy to close us out today and end all your trouble. Uh I'm gonna start out today with SPD three oh one A one. And this is a slide that would request that SPD report on police staffing, overtime, finances, and performance metrics. Um this slide is a continuation of a slide that the council has had over the last um few years. It is brought to you by uh Councilmember Herbold and co-sponsored by Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Peterson.
Councilmember Herbold, please go ahead.
Thanks, not much to add. Um again, this continues the council's oversight of the Police Department budget. This information is very useful for um committee briefings and is often bound on the agenda uh of um the Public Safety and Human Services Committee. The uh record, the requested reports are um by February twenty-fourth for uh end of year data. Um and um April twenty-fourth and July twenty-fourth quarterly reports in twenty twenty-three. Um what's new here is um a request for an update on something called the Work Schedule and Timekeeping Project. This is um a project that SPD has been working on, I think, since like twenty sixteen um to uh comply with the overtime and off-duty work management recommendations uh made in the city of Seattle twenty sixteen Police Department Overtime Controls Audit. Um and I'm just uh feeling with those, there are many um many recommendations of the city auditor um from from twenty sixteen that are identified as in progress. And SPD has identified the Work Schedule and Timekeeping Project as the thing that will help them uh come to uh to fully uh address the audit findings. Um and so just wanting to make sure that we get on track um or get back on track um with that work with these reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Are there any additional comments on this? I don't see any. We're gonna keep plugging away and getting that info, huh? Let's uh, let's go to the next one.
All right, so uh SPD three oh two A one is a request that SPD report on stage two of the Risk Management Demand Project. This is brought to you by, again, by Councilmember Herbold and co-sponsored by Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Peterson. This uh slide would request that the Seattle Police Department um provide a report on stage two of the RMD project, which would uh provide a briefing on the call classifier technology. This is a real-time call triaging solution that would allow for a classification of the severity of risk of any given call based on the historical data of the emergency calls associated outcomes. Um and it would then uh tie in with the RMD classifications that you heard in the September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two uh committee meeting. And uh it would build on itself using machine learning uh to recommend um the type of appropriate uh non-sworn response or a a co-response. Um this particular slide would request that the department um report back on whether it is planning to request external experts and or the public would review its call classifications that were presented to the uh committee on September twenty-seventh um as determined either by the RMD analysis algorithm or by uh staff when they overrode the algorithm. Um and then also to go over the project in general, uh the go-live date, the milestones that that uh would be necessary to reach to put this into place at the CSCC. And then also uh once it starts gathering data on on-call outcomes, how that's affecting the um deployment of alternative response. And then finally, uh how that would uh affect our ability to predict staffing for deployment of alternative response. The um, the first report I will point out is due on January thirty-first, and that is uh just to keep a tight timeline, tight timeline uh going with the RMD reporting process. This was one that um has been going on for a while, and the last report was August. So this is uh just following up on the last one to make sure that the council stays informed of uh progress uh on a regular basis. And that's all I had to to brief.
Thank you so much. Um I'm not seeing any any, oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Herbold, please, first. Please go ahead, Councilmember.
I don't have too much to add. Um this follows up on last year's statement of legislative intent. Uh following up after the Nick Jr. report on nine-one-one call analysis, that report only analyzed how nine-one-one calls were originally reported and what the um what the call types were. Um um, not the call types, how they were um originally um identified. Um but the RMD report is the next iteration of that call analysis and includes how the nine-one-one calls resolved. As I mentioned earlier today, um I think I think the headline really here is that um there's a a a lot of alignment between the RMD report um that looks both at how calls are classified at the beginning and the end as well, alignment between that report and the earlier Nick Jr. report that only looked at how calls were uh originally classified. Um so twenty-four percent um of uh of calls uh are identified as um as uh tier four calls, um that's eighty eighty-seven different call types. And uh tier three calls are um about forty-nine different call types, and that's another um almost fourteen percent of responses. So the police department themselves are saying that among these call types, up to uh, let's see here, nearly thirty-eight percent um might be able to be diverted. So again, I think the the headline here um with the R RMD analysis thus far is that it actually supports uh much of what we heard from from Nick Jr. Um one of the things I wanna I wanna lift up is that um the tier three um calls in the um earlier analysis um acknowledges that they're um what what they're calling is a a tiered response model, um the the tier three calls. Um even though we might be talking about a co-response, um SPD is acknowledging, and I quote um that the response ecosystem, police and fire, would be aware that an alternate response was in progress and may stage nearby, able to rapidly intervene, but would not be in attendance. So I know a lot of folks are are concerned that this, that the the work that we're being, we're doing around developing a a co-response still would um would result in police officers being deployed with the co-responder. And that is not necessarily the the direction that we're moving in. Um and so I I just wanna kind of give that as as context for for why I'm I am actually very optimistic about this work being moving forward. It is the comprehensive look at nine-one-one calls that is distinct from the pilot that we're moving forward on in a um in a more near-term fashion. But this comprehensive um look at the um all nine-one-one calls will eventually um result in uh deployment to more alternatives. So um I I'm excited about doing this work and appreciate that Central Staff worked on the uh on identifying these items for the slide uh directly with SPD, uh both on the timeline and on the the items to report out on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any additional comments on that? Okay. Thank you so much. I I think we have one walk on.
That is correct. Uh the last one uh that you will hear today, the is SPD Walk On One, and it is brought to you by Councilmember Sawant. Uh this would reduce proposed funding for the gunshot detection system uh by one million GF twenty twenty-three ongoing. Um and uh this would remove one million dollars uh uh reduce one million dollars from the mayor's proposed budget uh that would be used for the gun shot detection system for community outreach, planning, and development of a surveillance impact report.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant.
Thank you, uh Chair Muscata. The, as Greg said, this budget amendment would cut uh from the SPD budget, the million, one million dollars that the mayor has proposed to be used to buy the Shot Spotter company's product. Overall, the funding of repressive policing that primarily targets poor people and communities of color continues to be an ineffective way to keep communities safe. Studies show that it's inequality, not the scale of policing that has the real statistical impact on safety and crime. In this case, this amendment would simply cut the funding for Shot Spotter because it is such an egregious misuse of money. Because Shot Spotter, according to many peer-reviewed scientific studies, is essentially snake oil. Peer-reviewed studies have found that Shot Spotter does not reduce violent crime or even have a significant impact on terrorist outcomes after the fact. Um and I'll mention a couple of the journals that have studies on this, but even before that, there's a report from the San Diego Chicago Office of Inspector General um where we see that after a review of the C P D and Office of Emergency Management Communications data related to Shot Spotter alerts, the Chicago OIG found that Shot Spotter rarely leads C P D officers to evidence of a gun crime or to the recovery of a firearm. The OIG report also identified evidence that Shot Spotter holds dark, monkey's behavior, changing the way officers perceive and interact with individuals present in areas where Shot Spotter alerts are frequent. And so and there, as I said, peer-reviewed journals like the Journal of Experimental Urbanology and the Journal of Urban Health have studies that should have examined. For example, the Journal of Urban Health has a study that has examined sixty-eight large metropolitan counties and found that Shot Spotter does not have a significant impact on calculated homicides or terrorist outcomes. And just um last but not least, MacArthur Justice Center also did a study in which they found that Shot Spotter creates thousands of dead-end police deployments and find no evidence of actual gunfire. And the research um from this justice center, which is located in the Northwestern University School of Law, shows how eighty-nine percent of Shot Spotter deployments in Chicago turned up no gun-related crime. In reality, Shot Spotter is merely, this is me speaking, Shot Spotter is merely a corporation who will profit off the suffering of communities burdened by gun violence uh which real, which need real solutions, but this is not going to provide any meaningful service. And the Shot Spotter Corporation's business model sells their product to cities by donating to the election campaigns of elected officials. And so I believe this one million dollars should go towards a long list of essential human services that are uh that have been unfunded and or underfunded and will remain underfunded after this point in passing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Um I know you're having audio technical issues today. We could hear you. It just sounded a little bit like you were talking into a tin, but I think we all got it, and a lot of that was um a reiteration of some of the comments and the sources uh and the reports that we talked about uh the first time that we heard the presentation from the departments as well. So thanks for lifting up that data. Uh similarly, I had uh planned on addressing this in the chair's balancing package. Um given that we don't usually put forward amendments on each of the specific line item cuts, uh that's why it wasn't some uh put forward by my office. But since it's out here, I'm going to add my name as a co-sponsor to this as well. Um and is there any additional comments on this? See, I said see. Yes, Councilmember Herbold.
As 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 somebody who, in consultation with you, Madam Chair, um had offered to put forward a CBA but declined based on um on uh what you just shared with us. Um now that it's out here, I I too would like to put my name on it.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks, Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Herbold adding her name to SPD Walk On One. Councilmember Muscata, Muscata adding on as a co-sponsor to Walk On One as well. Any additional comments? Okay, thanks so much for bringing this forward and look forward to building on this and other items that we may want to reprioritize within the budget. Uh Greg, thanks for being our our last but not least presenter, uh and we know that there is much, much more to come. Um I wanted to give folks a sense of what to expect as well in the upcoming week. And I maybe I'll ask Ally as well to chime in on this. Since we have ten minutes left, I won't try to use all of it, but just want to use this as a quick second for our PSA. Of course, you'll receive our weekly memo on Monday that outlines what to expect in the upcoming week. You have the Central Staff. Of course, you'll receive our weekly memo on Monday that outlines what to expect in the upcoming week. You have the Central Staff. Um, meetings, uh, I think led by Patty and others on Central Staff that we highly encourage everybody to attend on Mondays and then again on Thursdays. Uh, to get the latest updates on what to expect in the, in the following week. Uh, so that will all be coming, but I wanted to specifically call out for you all that there will be. A revenue forecast update. Our Revenue Forecast Council does meet on November second from noon to two P M. This is a forecast council that is projected on Seattle City. Um. TV, uh, Seattle Channel, and you can tune in to see the deliberations there and uh, um. The information that we will all be receiving in real time, both through the legislative and executive branch. We've set up this process. So that everybody receives the information at the same time, again, noon on uh, November second. Uh, all indications from the national news to the local news make us all very nervous about this upcoming forecast, and I think. We've spent the last three days talking about adds to a budget. Uh, we are going to probably be in the position of having to make even harder, tougher, more tough decisions. Um, even with some of the suggested revenue that has been proposed. So it is, there's no easy solution, and um, I'm hoping that we'll continue to see greater stability in our local region and across the nation. But I just wanted to flag the potential impact that that revenue forecast on November second could have on our deliberations. Um, it's been great to talk about the ads, and now I think what we're gonna have to do is square that with the uh, revenue forecast that's coming in on November second. Uh, in addition to that, uh, throughout next week, I know that myself and Council Central Staff, our team, will be working. Uh, to dive into the presentate, the present, excuse me, the amendments as presented today, get additional information. And we will be looking um, to have conversations with you all. So thank you for being available to Central Staff as we work to refine some of the. Possible amendments that you've suggested, and we are gonna do our best to try to. Make a, a, a number of these priorities fit in with the existing revenue and possible new revenue that some of you have suggested. Um, thanks for getting us through the last three days, colleagues, and for the um, back and forth discussion. It's been productive, appreciate it. And really huge thank you to Central Staff for the tremendous amount of work that they've done around the clock. As usual in our budget season. So I see Director Handy and Deputy Director Pinucci online, and I'll hand it over to you to share any additional updates. About what to expect in the upcoming week.
Director Handy, did you wanna, Chairman, I'm happy to outline the week a little bit, but if you wanna jump in, defer to you.
You go, you go ahead. I'm just here to uh, help field uh, anything else.
Thank you. Um, so I, I don't have a lot to add to what the, um, what Chairman Muskata just described. Uh, we will be quickly pivoting. To work on um, creating an initial balance package. I won't trouble you with all the details that goes into that work. But um, we'll just encourage you all to start revisiting some of the issue ID memos and the attachments in the general fund balancing analysis. Um, as Chair Muskata said, this is going to be a challenging year, and as you look at your priorities alongside what is in the mayor's proposed budget. It is likely that you will be having to look for areas you're willing to cut um, to add, add some items. So I'll just encourage you all to. To revisit some of that work, and we look forward to working with the Chair and involve you to get um, some of these key priorities into the final adopted budget.
Thank you, Director Handy.
Yeah, and I'll just add that, that um, you know, for our conversation with the public, that um, balancing package comes out on Monday, November seventh. And uh, we, Central Staff will be in committee briefing on that package, followed by a public hearing on Tuesday, November eighth. So uh, we will all be back at you, with you in a week.
Any questions on process? Okay, Central Staff, I T, our um, clerks, uh, security, uh. Everybody who is both on the floor or virtually helping to manage these meetings, Seattle Channel. Our staff in our offices, thank you all for your thoughtful approach. To pulling this all together. Now we have the wish lists, and it's time to see what we can make happen with um, the news that we receive next week as well. With that, have a great weekend. I know I'll be seeing Central Staff this weekend, and you all have a great um, rest of your evenings. We got out on time. I just want. To again emphasize, five minutes before five. I was so worried we were gonna go over. Have a wonderful evening. This meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful evening. Not a meeting.
Nod, nod.